We joke.
Yep. That's good. Humor is a wonderful thing.
How many do we need? You know, one, two. Yeah, we find it temporary.
Where's David?
I don't know. Did you fire David?
If you could please silence your devices before we begin, thank you.
So, the money we save there, we can do more in Gilchrist's Park.
We can do more what?
Do more in Gilchrist's Park.
Good morning. Welcome to the October 7th, 2020 Pontegoro City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are here or in the building. I believe our, our city clerk is on vacation, but our deputy is filling in for her. And so, we will begin by standing for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come before you today and ask that you be with all the families that have lost loved ones to this coronavirus. Be close to them, Father, and give them your peace. Lord, we pray for our president and his family as they struggle with this virus. We pray for all in our nation who are doing the same. Father, forgive our errors of yesterday. Help each one of us walk closer to you in your ways today. Shine through us, Lord, so every person we meet may feel your presence in our soul. Take our hand, because we cannot make it on our own. Lord, bless this council and decisions they make today, which will affect the people of Pontegoro. We thank you for all these things, in the name of our Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, everyone. I hope this mic is okay. I'm leaning forward so that I can make sure that I'm loud enough. I want to begin by saying, welcome to Greg Murray's first solo city council meeting. He spent five, five weeks in the cockpit with our former city manager, Howard Koenig. He quickly got his commercial pilot's license so that he could take a full plane load of all of us along with him. And so, Greg, we're looking forward to this being your first council meeting. We hope it goes smoothly.
So do I.
And welcome to being our city manager, and we're glad to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So, with that, what we will begin the meeting, we have a special introduction of one of our newest police officers, who has just completed training yesterday. Jason, would you like to come in and introduce our new officer?
Good morning, everybody. Jason Chaskini from the Pontegoro Police Department. Just want to go off script here for a second. I know this is not on the agenda, but we wanted to introduce this morning Officer Fernando Berga and K-9 Sadie. K-9 Sadie has been with us just for a short time now, but she actually just graduated from training yesterday. She's certified for the United States Police K-9 Association in Narcotics and Tracking. And she will actually go out on patrol for the very first time tomorrow solo with Officer Berga. So, we just wanted to come in this morning and introduce everybody.
Cool. Awesome.
News graduate. You notice how when she came in, she was sniffing everything?
In front of you.
Right, yeah. Keeping her safe and straight.
Welcome, Sadie. So glad to have you. As Officer Berga said to me this morning, she's, and she gets really mad if you don't pet her. Yeah.
She's very hopeful about it.
All right.
Still a puppy.
Oh, yeah. She's all puppy. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for bringing her in.
So, with that, we will turn the meeting over to our city manager. We will read public comment into the record, and then we will follow that up with public comments, so.
We do have several emails that came in on several different items, and I'll read them in order of the category. First, we had one that was regarding the mask ordinance, and this was from Roberta Capen. I would like to encourage all city council members to extend the mask ordinance in the city until the end of the year, December 2020. Our city is doing well and certainly can't afford to have things changed now. Please pass this email on to other council members. Thank you. And then, we start with the resiliency compact. It was suggested Tom Cavanaugh that he contact the council concerning the resiliency compact. I am currently a board member of Team Pontegoro and former member of the Pontegoro City Council. Team Pontegoro was formed following the devastation of Hurricane Charlie in 2004 by a group of citizens that launched the development of a master plan that guided Pontegoro's recovery. Over time, the focus has shifted from disaster recovery to community development. A more recent project was a collaborative event led by Team and the city of Pontegoro bringing over 700 stakeholders to Charlotte County Event and Conference Center to discuss and learn about sound strategies for the future planning of our city. Like much of southwest Florida, Pontegoro's development is heavily dependent upon the quality and accessibility of our canals and waterfronts. With that in mind, Team is now working on another event, bringing stakeholders and professionals together with a focus on water quality. The effort has been stalled by COVID-19. We have subsequently learned of the Southwest Florida Regional Resilience Compact, recently approved by the Charlotte County Commission, and scheduled for discussion at an upcoming meeting with the Pontegoro City, Pontegoro City Council. The document seems to encourage resiliency over mitigation and does not address the impaired status of virtually all the waterways within the compact. We would welcome an opportunity to better understand the intent of the document in dealing with water quality issues, which may or may not be a direct result of climate change. Many thanks to you and your team for taking this on. Then, we have one from Sherri Lenora. To city council, I wish to weigh in on two things before the council today. First, the issue of boat covers. I am opposed to any sort of boat covers being allowed in PGI, even those that are for low-profile boats. There would be no way to monitor the condition of the covers, or the language, colors, or designs that could appear on those covers. They are unsightly and will lead to further demands for boat garages. I understand boat owners have a large investment in their boats. I have a larger investment in my most important asset, my view. I am required to maintain my home, lawn, dock, and everything else on my property. I do so without an unsightly cover over my home. Boat owners should also be required to maintain their property without unsightly covers. Second, there needs to be stricter requirements regarding contractor hours and days of operations. I've had five homes built around me since I moved here six years ago. The contractors work from early morning to late at night, Monday through Saturday. When they are putting on roofs, the noise goes up the canal or is close by. The noise is almost unbearable. I've had to leave my home when this work occurs. To allow it to happen at all hours and on weekends adds insult to injury. Please allow residents to have a respite from the noise. I am not against development, but 12 hours a day, six days a week, is too much. Thank you. And from Jim Lawson and Sue Reeves. First of all, thank you for aiding a discussion on the general neighborhood noise to the city council agenda for October 7th. Since moving to PGI, we've been made very aware of the lack of respect that landscapers and contractors have while working in our streets. The current city code allows for lawn care to take place every day of the week. However, most recently, the city lot mowing of vacant lots has been undertaken as early as 7:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, which we consider very unbecoming of any neighborhood in our city, especially since of city-paid mowers doing this work, who we might best utilize to set examples for others to be more considerate of their neighbors. We understand that mowing, especially with the recent rains, is difficult to schedule, but there should be at least one day of the week where peace reigns supreme. Even on a Saturday, there should be a time limit when mowing may be carried out. 7:00 p.m. in the evening during the dinner hour is not such a time. Our other issue is construction crews. Progress is good, but having extremely large flatbed trucks arriving for work at 6:15 a.m. and then reversing through our streets that they cannot traverse in a regular fashion with loud reverse beeping accompanying their way is no way to be awoken on any day of the week. On more than one recent occasion, they arrive for work with floodlight type lights on their trucks, radios blaring, and abusive language being exchanged amongst each other. When asked to pipe it down, they simply flip you off. Sorry, who owns these houses here? They are the guests. They should respect our peace and tranquility and refrain from such animal behavior. Moreover, a recent walk of our streets, photos attached shows you firsthand the lack of care they take while working on our streets. No one wants to wake up to this mess in their yard. We respectfully ask council to review current codes and consider, A, restricting the times when lawn mowers, mowing can take place, trying to keep Sundays a day of rest, and B, making sure that general contractors are made aware of code conduct, come port themselves while going about their work on neighborhoods, not their own. Attached are the city of Naples' current regulations for review, respectfully submitted. And then, it attaches the Naples ordinances, which have residential areas 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no work conducted on specific holidays and Sunday hours of operation exception is lawn maintenance only from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tree trimming or tree removal should not occur on Sunday in residential or non-residential areas unless a special permit's obtained. John Chaloveau. My name, actually from Bonnie Chaloveau. My name is Bonnie Chaloveau. My husband and I lived down the street since 2009. Hearing that city council is considering addressing some complaints about excessive construction slash lawn maintenance noise, I wish to reintroduce the consideration of excessive noise of loud music from downtown bars and restaurants that goes beyond their premises into our neighborhood. As many of you may recall, this came before the city council in June 2019, but due to prior erroneous reporting by local TV, paper, and social media, the public was led to believe the agenda was to stop the music rather than control noise level. The outpouring of concerned citizens and business owners that music would end in Pontegoro led council to not to consider any changes or enforcement of the ordinance, rather it was decided that businesses would police themselves. As I read it, Section 14-1, "Sounds offensive beyond the premises of origin, and shall be unlawful for any person to make calls or to be made or permit to be made in the city, noise or sounds that are offensive beyond the premises of such person upon which the noise or sounds are made. I ask you if I can hear and feel the bass from the music in my own home blocks from the source isn't that excessive. This is not an unreasonable request. Many cities have ordinances to maintain music from establishments must be at reasonable volume, and it will not cause the establishments to lose business," as many businesses argued at the June meeting. "Serve alcohol, and the people will come. While a citizen may hear construction noises, it will only be for the duration of the project, and lawn maintenance is usually weekly for approximately up to half an hour per property during the daytime hours. We hear the music every weekend and various evenings for hours duration into the nighttime, and it will only become more prevalent as more restaurant bars open, bringing more music." Case in point is the new open structure restaurant with stage in the middle of downtown. Why does downtown have to have its music carry like an outside arena? If I want to hear the music, I will go to the business. Obviously, since COVID restrictions, the impact has reduced to music for months, but we have begun hearing it as a business, as businesses are headed back to a sense of normal. We are asking that if noise of some businesses is being addressed due to some citizens' concerns, it should be council obligation to address the other issues, past and present, of above-mentioned businesses creating noise beyond their premise. It is our concern, as it affects our every night hours. Again, we wish to be clear, we are asking these businesses restrict the volume of their music, not the music itself. Thank you. I was trying to get that into three minutes before I got buzzed.
You did good. You did very well.
From Bob Fritz. This was now concerning the Chapter 6 deliberation. Good morning. I live on the perimeter canal in BSI. I have an elevert boat lift. Has the 60-feet-wide canal at my location would not permit a four-post boat lift. This was in 2005. Apparently, now a four-post boat lift would be fine, as many newer four-post lifts encroach into the 40-foot-wide passageway. My previous email contained five examples of the encroachment, and he's referencing one that he asked that it be condensed into this for time purposes. Section 6-6 of the existing ordinance states, "In Burnstour Isle subdivision, where waterways or any one side of the waterway is seawalled, a passageway of any 40 feet is required to be maintained. The required passageway is measured from the outmost structure waterward to the limit of unobstructed waterway. The limit of the unobstructed waterway is the mangrove. You cannot navigate adjacent to the mangroves. You will damage the mangroves as well as your vessel. A buffer of four to six feet should be required to protect the mangroves. That buffer should not be part of the navigable channel. While the existing ordinance indicates that 40-feet navigable channel or required passageway is to be maintained in the BSI perimeter canal, the new amended ordinance changes that too. In the BSI subdivision, where only one side is seawalled, the passageway shall consist of 20 feet on each side of the center line of the waterway. This new requirement of 20 feet on each side of the center line is going to result in many four-post lifts and maybe even some eleverts becoming non-conforming. It is much different than the previous..."
This was from Roberta Capen. I would like to encourage all city council members to extend the mass ordinance in the city until the end of the year, December 2020. Our city is doing well and certainly can't afford to have things change now. Please pass this email on to other council members. Thank you. And then we start with the resiliency compact. It was suggested Tom Cavanaugh that he contact the council concerning the resiliency compact. I am currently a board member of Team Punta Gorda and former member of the Punta Gorda City Council. Team Punta Gorda was formed following the devastation of Hurricane Charlie in 2004 by a group of citizens that launched the development of a master plan that guided Punta Gorda's recovery. Over time, the focus has shifted from disaster recovery to community development. A more recent project was a collaborative event led by Team and the City of Punta Gorda bringing over 700 stakeholders to Charlotte County Event and Conference Center to discuss and learn about sound strategies for the future planning of our city. Like much of southwest Florida, Punta Gorda's development is heavily dependent upon the quality and accessibility of our canals and waterfronts. With that in mind, Team is now working on another event, bringing stakeholders and professionals together with a focus on water quality. The effort has been stalled by COVID-19. We have subsequently learned of the Southwest Florida Regional Resilience Compact, recently approved by the Charlotte County Commission, and scheduled for discussion at an upcoming meeting with the Punta Gorda City Council. The document seems to encourage resiliency over mitigation and does not address the impaired status of virtually all the waterways within the compact. We would welcome an opportunity to better understand the intent of the document in dealing with water quality issues, which may or may not be a direct result of climate change. Many thanks to you and your team for taking this on. Then we have one from Sherry Lenora. To city council, I wish to weigh in on two things before the council today. First, the issue of boat covers. I am opposed to any sort of boat covers being allowed in PGI, even those that are for low-profile boats. There would be no way to monitor the condition of the covers or the language, colors, or designs that could appear on those covers. They are unsightly and will lead to further demands for boat garages. I understand boat owners have a large investment in their boats. I have a larger investment in my most important asset, my view. I am required to maintain my home lawn dock and everything else on my property. I do so without an unsightly cover over my home. Boat owners should also be required to maintain their property without unsightly covers. Second, there needs to be stricter requirements regarding contractor hours and days of operations. I've had five homes built around me since I moved here six years ago. The contractors work from early morning to late at night, Monday through Saturday. When they are putting on roofs, the noise goes up the canal or is close by. The noise is almost unbearable. I've had to leave my home when this work occurs. To allow it to happen at all hours and on weekend adds insult to injury. Please allow residents to have a respite from the noise. I am not against development, but 12 hours a day, six days a week, is too much. Thank you. And from Jim Lawson and Sue Reeves. First of all, thank you for aiding a discussion on the general neighborhood noise to the city council agenda for October 7th. Since moving to PGI, we've been made very aware of the lack of respect that landscapers and contractors have while working in our streets. The current city code allows for lawn care to take place every day of the week. However, most recently, the city lot mowing of vacant lots has been undertaken as early as 7:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, which we consider very unbecoming of any neighborhood in our city, especially since of city-paid mowers doing this work, who we might best utilize to set examples for others to be more considerate of their neighbors. We understand that mowing, especially with the recent rains, is difficult to schedule, but there should be at least one day of the week where peace reigns supreme. Even on a Saturday, there should be a time limit when mowing may be carried out. 7:00 p.m. in the evening during the dinner hour is not such a time. Our other issue is construction crews. Progress is good, but having extremely large flatbed trucks arriving for work at 6:15 a.m. and then reversing through our streets that they cannot traverse in a regular fashion with loud reverse beeping accompanying their way is no way to be awoken on any day of the week. On more than one recent occasion, they arrive for work with floodlight type lights on their trucks, radios blaring, and abusive language being exchanged amongst each other. When asked to pipe it down, they simply flip you off. Sorry, who owns these houses here? They are the guests. They should respect our peace and tranquility and refrain from such animal behavior. Moreover, a recent walk of our streets, photos attached shows you firsthand the lack of care they take while working on our streets. No one wants to wake up to this mess in their yard. We respectfully ask council to review current codes and consider, A, restricting the times when lawn mowers' mowing can take place, trying to keep Sundays a day of rest, and B, making sure that general contractors are made aware of code conduct, come port themselves while going about their work on neighborhoods, not their own. Attached are the City of Naples' current regulations for review, respectfully submitted. And then it attaches the Naples ordinances, which have residential areas 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no work conducted on specific holidays and Sunday hours of operation exception is lawn maintenance only from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tree trimming or tree removal shall not occur on Sunday in residential or non-residential areas unless a special permit obtained. John Chalovee. My name, actually from Bonnie Chalovee. My name is Bonnie Chalovee. My husband and I lived down the street since 2009. Hearing that city council is considering addressing some complaints about excessive construction slash lawn maintenance noise, I wish to reintroduce the consideration of excessive noise of loud music from downtown bars and restaurants that goes beyond their premises into our neighborhood. As many of you may recall, this came before the city council in June 2019, but due to prior erroneous reporting by local TV, paper, and social media, the public was led to believe the agenda was to stop the music rather than control noise level. The outpouring of concerned citizens and business owners that music would end in Punta Gorda led council to not to consider any changes or enforcement of the ordinance, rather it was decided that businesses would police themselves. As I read it, Section 14-1, sounds offensive beyond the premises of origin, and shall be unlawful for any person to make calls or to be made or permit to be made in the city, noise or sounds that are offensive beyond the premises of such person upon which the noise or sounds are made. I ask you if I can hear and feel the bass from the music in my own home blocks from the source isn't that excessive. This is not an unreasonable request. Many cities have ordinances to maintain music from establishments must be at reasonable volume, and it will not cause the establishments to lose business, as many businesses argued at the June meeting. Serve alcohol and the people will come. While a citizen may hear construction noises, it will only be for the duration of the project and lawn maintenance is usually weekly for approximately up to half an hour per property during the daytime hours. We hear the music every weekend and various evenings for hours duration into the nighttime, and it will only become more prevalent as more restaurant bars open, bringing more music. Case in point is the new open structure restaurant with stage in the middle of downtown. Why does downtown have to have its music carry like an outside arena? If I want to hear the music, I will go to the business. Obviously, since COVID restrictions, the impact has reduced the music for months, but we have begun hearing it as a business, as businesses are headed back to a sense of normal. We are asking that if noise of some businesses is being addressed due to some citizens' concerns, it should be council obligation to address to other issues, past and present, of above-mentioned businesses creating noise beyond their premise. It is our concern, as it affects our every night hours. Again, we wish to be clear, we are asking these businesses restrict the volume of their music, not the music itself. Thank you. I was trying to get that into three minutes before I got buzzed.
You did good. You did very well.
From Bob Fritz. This was now concerning the Chapter 6 deliberation. Good morning. I live on the perimeter canal in BSI. I have an elevert boat lift. Has the 60-feet-wide canal at my location would not permit a four-post boat lift? This was in 2005. Apparently now, a four-post boat lift would be fine, as many newer four-post lifts encroach into the 40-foot-wide passageway. My previous email contained five examples of the encroachment, and he's referencing one that he asked that it be condensed into this for time purposes. Section 6-6 of the existing ordinance states, "In Bernstein Isle subdivision, on waterways where only one side of the waterway is seawalled, a passageway of any 40 feet is required to be maintained. The required passageway is measured from the outmost structure waterward to the limit of unobstructed waterway." The limit of the unobstructed waterway is the mangroves. You cannot navigate adjacent to the mangroves. You will damage the mangroves as well as your vessel. A buffer of four to six feet should be required to protect the mangroves. That buffer should not be part of the navigable channel. While the existing ordinance indicates that 40-feet navigable channel or required passageway is to be maintained in the BSI perimeter canal, the new amended ordinance changes that too. In the BSI subdivision, where only one side is seawalled, the passageways shall consist of 20 feet on each side of the center line of the waterway. This new requirement of 20 feet on each side of the center line is going to result in many four-post lifts and maybe even some eleverts becoming non-conforming. It is much different than the previous ordinance requirement of 40 feet to the unobstructed waterway or mangroves. The amended ordinance also states, "No event shall structure or any combination of structures impede safe navigation nor extend into the navigable channel." There are already many examples of the four-post lifts encroaching into the 40-foot requirement. One lift leaves only about 30 feet for safe navigation, and it is to the edge of the mangroves. I believe that a number of four-post lifts on the BSI perimeter canal were permitted in error. This was probably due to contractors providing incorrect information to the building department. I am not advocating for the removal of these lifts, but I would like to stop any future lifts from becoming additional hazards to navigation. I would also like clarification on the 40-feet passageway contained in the old ordinance to the 20 feet on each side of the center line requirement contained in the amended ordinance. The new amended ordinance, the Section 2.1b, references a special purpose survey. I believe that this survey should be required for all waterway construction permits on the BSI perimeter canal. Thank you for your time. Next, from Mr. Wright. Regarding the boat covers, I fully concur with your comments and think that this part of the ordinance should be removed. It was comments against the boat covers, and think that this part of the ordinance should be removed and discussed in much fuller detail, so as to dissuade from potential misunderstanding and interpretation of the rules. Thank you. Then we have Mary Jo Miragul Leodlo. Which you may be able to pronounce that.
Just remember, in Italian, every vowel is a syllable.
Well, there's plenty of syllables.
I haven't started the time yet, so that's just...
Plenty of syllables in this one.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
From Mary Jo, yes. This is on parking in Gilchrist, starting with those. Please allow the proposed parking for 201 spaces to proceed. Put the park back to the way it was before you made any changes. James Ram. Dear council persons, please refrain from the ongoing paving of Gilchrist Park. As a regular visitor to the park for many years, and I can attest to the availability of existing parking, the One Street parking of Phase 1 is attractive and could be continued down Reta Esplanade. Also, the playground parking lot could be improved. Beyond those two things, the existing parking lots are more than adequate and rarely filled. The Bayfront Center lot is totally underused. There is also access to Gilchrist Park by way of the Harbor Walk from the large parking lot of the Charlotte Event Center. An agreement could be arranged with the Punta Gorda Waterfront Inn for partial use of their parking lot. Also, the United Methodist Church on Marion has a large parking area that is one block from the park. My point is that there is an abundance of parking in the Gilchrist Park area that is underutilized. I participated in the Journey to the Future event last year. The city spent thousands of dollars to receive the message of preserve the green space in the park. Please heed the advice of Victor Dover and preserve thousands of dollars by not paving the park respectfully. And this is from Jerry Reisley. Too much money has already been spent on the park. It was quite okay before the big money spent just recently. We need more discretion on money spent by the city. The world, U.S., et cetera, is becoming cautious, and we need to slow down on spending. Then from Sandy Brandt. Dear city council members, my comments are regarding parking for Gilchrist Park. There are three major issues I urge you to consider. Fiscal responsibility, data to document the actual need for additional parking, and its historical importance. One fiscal responsibility. Every option illustrated in the presentation is at an additional cost. They all require funds we don't have. Our previous city manager explained at a community meeting that our current plan is to add to our reserves at 1.5% per year. Given how low our reserves are, this does not seem aggressive enough. If we did have extra money to spend, there are many more critical areas of need. For example, I've been told by city staff that we resurface roads about every 20 years a short drive around town. Especially the historic district would convince anyone this is not an adequate schedule. In addition to the road surface, much of the sewer system underneath is also in need of attention. Additional data questions? What do the leases with the boat club and YMCA indicate regarding parking? At the last meeting, Gilchrist parking was discussed. One council member stated, "We need more parking in the park, not on the street," so we need more of our parking designated accessible versus more parking. I walk to the area almost daily and have observed available lot and/or street parking at all times of the day and all days of week. When and for what reason do we need more parking? How might COVID-19 impact the need for parking in addition to what we have? What is the benchmark for parking at a park as small as Gilchrist? We have additional parking lots within a short walk east, west, and south of Gilchrist. Can those be marketed so visitors are aware of them instead of making more parking in the park? What is the flooding implication on this area that is so vulnerable to flooding? How many of the 11 acres will be consumed by parking and the necessary retention ponds that render them unusable as park? And last, historical importance, Gilchrist Park is a huge part of our history. Please don't forget the original intent of this setting this most valuable asset aside for the public to enjoy nature. Please take time to assess and discuss all of the data, some of which may not be available today. Your decision will have lasting impact. No one wants it redone in a few years because of unintended consequence. Thank you for your service and consideration. And this is Jen Janer. I feel compelled to contribute my observations on Gilchrist changes and beautification attempts by the city. My very first impression of the park in 2016 was delight, which sealed my decision that PGI was where I could relocate after 30 years in overdeveloped, overpopulated central Florida. After closing in April 2017, I was so disappointed specifically in the change to the East End parking lot. The parking with ease factor was gone. Since my move as a permanent resident, I am on a park bench waterside daily, having my coffee newspaper, appreciating the beauty, ambiance, and privilege of starting each day with such a peaceful view. Daily, I have many positive exchanges with residents, neighbors from across the bridge, visitors, et cetera, who also appreciate this gorgeous area. Many people drive and park, but many have stated they have to find a space by going to Fisherman's Village and walk. They are grateful Harbor Walk just opened. This morning, there was a lovely memorial service under the pavilion right next to the parking. There wasn't adequate parking for regular visitors, let alone the 60 to 70 memorial guest. The original L-shaped is much more of a positive accommodation and was better than the inadequate, poorly constructed, wasted area that exists. Being aware of the cost, city is investing in beautification. I hate to see this important issue, East End parking overlooked. And that is all the comments we have to be read into the record.
Okay. If there's anyone here that wishes to provide public comment today for any of the items on the agenda or other items on your mind, please come to the podium, and you have three minutes. I would like to remind you that we are respectful of everyone and what your opinion is on each of the items, and there will be no applause for anyone. We don't want to intimidate anyone in the audience who may not agree with you, and we want them to feel welcome to provide public comment as well. So we will begin public comment. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi. My name is Nicole Idavia. I am here as research and outreach manager, representing the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership. I am speaking with regards to the regional resiliency climate compact that is on the agenda for today. Just a little bit of a refresher on the CHNEP as renowned. We are a regional organization comprised of federal, state, county, and municipal governments, working together to protect water quality, quality of life, and wildlife throughout central and southwest Florida. We actually had Dr. Severese present to our governing body back in January of 2020, and the governing body decided to pass a resolution that I wanted to share with you all today. As you may know, some of you sit on our governing body as well, City of Punta Gorda, so we wanted to encourage you all to support the resiliency compact. So whereas the consensus among the world's leading scientists that global climate change is among the most significant problem facing the world today, Florida is considered one of the most vulnerable areas in the country with respect to the consequences of climate change, with central and southwest Florida on the front line to experience the impacts of climate change, including increased intensity of storms and rising sea levels. Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership encompasses parts or all of 10 counties and 27 cities in central and southwest Florida, as well as the state and federal entities that work collaboratively to protect water and wildlife in the region. The aforementioned 10 counties in central and southwest Florida represent approximately 15% of the total number of counties in the state of Florida and are physically linked to one another by rivers that flow to the estuaries and out to the Gulf of Mexico. Rising sea levels could limit the effectiveness of critical drainage infrastructure, endanger beaches, and coastal natural resources, and increase incidence of saltwater intrusion into the fresh surface waters and the aquifers, putting at risk the drinking water supply for entire populations of southwest Florida. Local governments and the region as a whole must give significant consideration to adaptation strategies designed to protect public infrastructure, property, water resources, natural areas, and native species, and basic quality of life. CHNEP has independently taken steps to address global climate change, and all CHNEP entities recognize that the coordinated and collective action is needed on this defining issue for central and southwest Florida. Therefore, be it resolved by the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership on this, the 15th day of January 2020, that we support the development of a regional climate compact for central and southwest Florida. I have a copy of that here for you all, if you'd like to view it as well, but thank you for the time and thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Patty Allen, and today I represent 751 Reta Esplanade. I would like to comment on Agenda Item 6A, Gilchrist Park Harbor Walk Phase 2 Parking. Please reconsider adding all this concrete to this area, and especially the diagonal parking. Fiscally, at this time, it is not in the best interest of the city. Keep the green space. This home stretches the entire block between Dolly and Berry, and I just ask that you reconsider this added parking in this area. Thank you.
Okay, I have to say, Jim, you have been, you've already used up two minutes of your time. So you have, because Greg is, seriously, you have, he took two minutes to read the document that you forwarded to be read into the record.
Okay.
So if you'd like to take one more minute?
Sure. My name is Jim Lawson, resident of Punta Gorda. I live in PGI, and I'm here about an issue of concern mainly regarding the mowing and maintenance of lawns, the timeframe and construction, the construction trucks, and a lot of the damage that they do to the lawns all over town, especially when they go down cul-de-sacs where an 18-wheeler is not equipped to maneuver a straight road, Val Harbor or something. They don't seem to have an issue with it, but getting down the cul-de-sacs, I sent pictures, they do incredible damage. When they grade, they grade dirt out into the cul-de-sac, and you can't drive around it without driving through the mud. Sue has had some of the same issues. The other she mainly confronted was the code of conduct. She went out very nicely and asked them. They flipped her off, and this was, what time, Sue?
About 7:30 in the morning.
About 7:30 in the morning. They have these trucks. They get there before the construction crew. They put a beeper on for when they're reversing, and they sit there with the beeper going until the construction crew arrives.
Thank you.
I just think there needs to be some review of this.
Thank you, Jim.
But I also want to note that that's the exception for city employees and stuff. They have had to get out of the truck, and Sue was witnesses, and walk to pick up bins because they can't get around the cul-de-sacs, and they have to go from house to house on foot, carry the bins back, and empty them because they cannot get around the cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
So, I think that.
We appreciate you being here.
Okay, sure.
Do I have any time or no?
Well...
I think I used it.
Do you need to take a minute or something, just quickly?
Yeah, I really just, I'm Sue Reeves. Well, John and Jim live next door to me. I don't live next door to them. Get that in the record.
Okay.
I really want to say thank you to our city crews because they have had to endure some very unusual and uncomfortable times to try to pick up refuse in our street, and I really appreciate that. I would suggest that maybe we take a look, a little closer look at the Naples Codes because we don't need to reinvent the wheel if we can just follow some precedent that's already been set. I think Jim Slatter probably said most of it, and then he followed up. So thank you for allowing us to speak, and hopefully we'll all be happy at the end of the day.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item on our agenda? I think Mr. Byrne wants to say something.
Good morning. I have two minutes of comments.
You can have three.
John, thank you. John Byrne, 2520 Rio Grande Drive, representing the Punta Gorda Boat Club on the matter of parking along Reta and around the Bayfront Center and the Boat Club Building. I thank the council and the staff for understanding the needs of the Boat Club in considering parking options. We've seen it in previous meetings. When the Harbor Walk went in, the large grassy area in front of the Boat Club was lost for big events. For our largest events at the Boat Club, we would carefully park 80 to 90 cars in that grassy area. With the Harbor Walk now in, we'll be able to park about 25 to 30 cars along Berry Street driveway. We can manage that 60-space deficit, short-term, by using the Bayfront Lot and judicious use of street parking. We'll improvise and make it work somehow because we know that someday the city is going to put in new parking in front of the Bayfront Center and along Reta. As originally planned, those spaces would make up for those that have been lost through the Harbor Walk, although a little further away from the Boat Club Building. So our needs are new parking to make up for the lost parking and to keep the new spaces closest to the Boat Club. So as you consider the staff presentation today, any option that provides less than about 60 new spaces is a net decrease from where we were before the Harbor Walk went in. So our ideal preference is the original plan as designed, Option 1. If one of the lower-cost options must be chosen, we would say that our preference is Option 6 because the spaces are closest to the Boat Club and will manage the deficit for our big events. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to come to the podium and speak on behalf of any of the items on our agenda today? Okay, seeing no one, then if anyone is here to introduce yourself as a board or committee member nominee, would you please come forward and introduce yourself? We'd like to get to know who you are. Okay, seeing none, then we will adjourn as the city council, and we will reconvene as Boy, we did that fast. The October 7th CRA meeting is now in session, and we'll begin with a CRA Project Status Report. Greg, it's your first one as the Executive Director of the CRA.
Thank you very much. You're rushing. I'll be there in a minute. Look at the city hall for a while. I'll open the picture.
I think we need a little assistance here. There we go.
So the Community Redevelopment Agency Monthly Report, Greg Murray, reporting as Executive Director. For the municipal marina, you can see that annually we have essentially the same number of vessels, monthly vessels likewise are slightly less, and when we talk about our transience, this month or September compared to last year, we've not had many transients. We're still fairly full at the marina. We have 80 spaces total. Of those 80, 75 are used right now. We have some of the remainder for transience, and it appears that in the next month or so, we have 50 vessels on the list that are waiting to come in, starting really this month now. So the marina is very busy, and they're doing a good job at trying to maintain.
Greg, is the community room closed? That residence area?
No, the community room, last month likewise, we did not have any rentals there. It is not closed. We still have social distancing guidelines in place, of course, as a city facility, but it is open and available for use and can be booked, yes.
Is that something we could put in the weekly report, that that facility is available for use?
Yep, we certainly can.
So that people might perceive that it is closed and...
We can, and when we've talked to various groups, we've actually commented that if they need meeting space, that they can look at that because it is available. So that's a good point.
I have a question. Lynn?
With regard to the marina facility itself, obviously our numbers are down slightly from last year, and we were, we were full last year at the numbers we had last year, but now we're saying we're full this year, and I just wonder what, why the disparity. And also, I want to make sure that we're not using the, the day dock for overnight dock space because that dock needs to be, remain open for people who want to go over there for a few hours during the daytime hours. And I know a lot of the local boat clubs go down to Lashley Marina, Lashley Crab House, to the other restaurants nearby, and I would hate to see us using that day dock for overnight dock space. Can we make sure that that isn't happening?
Yep, we certainly can. And we do have a few less boats, as you can see, compared to last month. We do have a couple more spaces being used now for the first responder boats, and of course, we have one for the pump-out and one for the marina boat that are being used. Right now, we have the five really that are vacant for transient, but other than that, we have the 50 that are waiting to come in, and they'll be placed in various locations. We did have the 13 free public side ties that were used, as you can see, but we'll certainly make sure that...
That and the, and the fuel dock, I mean, you know, are the pump-out dock, whatever we're calling it, I think those spaces need to be kept clear for people who are coming and going and not staying overnight because that's kind of the purpose of having a public marina. And while I understand the need to have live boards and other full-time resident boats there, I want to make sure that we're not overusing that, the daytime facility docking spaces.
Right. Currently, we have 67 that are fully rented spaces.
And I understand one dock is out of use?
One dock is out of use currently.
Do we know why?
I do not know why.
Okay.
And if there was a maintenance issue there, I can find out what that is then.
Thank you.
And of course, when we move to our pump-out vessels, the number of pump-outs, you can see 84 versus last year in 1987, generally similar, 168 miles traveled, but you can see that the number of Florida vessels is down while the number of non-Florida vessels is up. So there's a little bit of a change in demographic there, but you're still doing a lot of work and putting a lot of miles on that pump-out vessel to ensure that all vessels are properly serviced and maintain that water quality parameter. When we look at Gilchrist Park and the Harbor Walk, the only portion, obviously, the Harbor Walk was open, which is a beautiful amenity out there. We're still looking at some of the electrical work and punch-list items that needed complete, and still looking at the end of October to hopefully be complete with the items that still remain. The only real issue we've had to date with that opening is some of the bicycles now that are on the path. When you come around some of the curves, there's other uses that traverse the Harbor Walks, such as the Learn to Sail Club when they're rigging boats and moving them, and we want to make sure that we put some indication that shows, you know, caution that there may be other people that are traversing that Harbor Walk so that we don't have any collisions in that area because you can get up some pretty good speed on that Harbor Walk, on the bicycles.
I actually had someone comment to me about that, that there was a problem in that area, and I mentioned your suggested solution of having some kind of a warning, sandwich board of alerting bicyclist that something was ahead, and they thought that was a really great solution. So I just wanted to give that feedback.
Some kind of signage, and it appears that there may be some one up near the bridge too, when the golf carts and bicycles are possibly coming alternate directions, that we may need to just have a caution sign that warns people to go slow and careful. Next, when we look at the remaining improvements, the council, of course, if you weren't aware, is going to discuss that today. I'm facetious there, of course. So, we will be talking about the remaining improvements, including parking lots and more street parking, and hopefully can come to some resolution to give staff directional now to move so that we can complete the construction phase of Gilchrist and get back to the more user-friendly use of Gilchrist Park. The Harbor Walk, the ADA ramp at US 41, that's been a project that's been discussed for some time. The FDOT has come up with 367,000 in grant funding to help make that happen, and that'll be a great amenity when that's complete. Of course, another construction project, and when that agreement is prepared, that'll be brought back to council for approval so that that process can begin. Wayfinding signs, we did have the urban design staff walk the project with the engineer of record, which will start spelling, spelling out some of these acronyms just for the public's edification. So, that was just to ensure that everyone's on the same page as we move forward with that project and designing and how it'll be constructed so that we can continue to keep that moving forward. Gilchrist Park, the additional recreational amenities, the playground surface is one of the main things. It'll probably be next week that we start work on that, and it'll be closed for a week to 10 days to resurface that part of the park. The pickleball and basketball courts, they've been re, or are being resurfaced. There's some work that they still hope will be complete by the end of this week so that everything's open by the end of the current week. Basketball courts are currently usable. Pickleball, they're trying to get resurfaced and finished up. Veterans Park, the memorial paver database, that was quite a success. There was a lot of work done there between a lot of groups to get those not only categorized, but there's going to be additional work that will be required. If I can just read you something, it took place on Saturday, 9/26. The goal of inventorying 1,000 pavers that will be placed in Veterans Park. Many of the veteran volunteers, spouses, and boy scouts worked together to help create a database for all veteran pavers, which had to be done first before the cleaning. Remember, a lot of these had to be cleaned, there's concrete on, and that'll be another major project. It's kind of overwhelming, but the bricks need to be cleaned, and the group of volunteers are working to organize that event with the volunteers that can use specific equipment to cut off the cement. There's no specific date for placing the pavers yet, but what is happening is there, it's like a big puzzle because right now in the area that they're to be placed, there's already pavers in that area, and they're all four-by-eight pavers that are placed in a basket weave pattern, and what needs to happen there, the ones that are going to be placed are all, are four-by-eight, eight-by-eight, and 12-by-12. So, when you have four-by-eights in a basket weave, and you're trying to take those out and put in eight-by-eights, 12-by-twelves in a different pattern, that's a big puzzle that they're working on the design right now. That'll need some additional planning, and Betsy and General Carr are working on that. So, that's different from the New Donor Plaza where they only sell the eight-by-eight pavers, and they're designed, designed to lay out to accommodate them. So, of course, on that one, General Carr places each one of them himself. So, that's a lot of work being done on that, and it will continue. Hopefully, we'll get those in as quickly as possible. Lashley Park recreational area. With that, we're still waiting on the proposal for two options for design and remediation of some of the equipment there that needs replaced. There may be an option for an all-wet area, and there may be one that has a dry area with a wet area for the proposed playground, and then also potentially around the inside radius of the sidewalk, we could have something that is right in here, a knee wall or a small sitting wall that would not only protect the splash from going out onto the sidewalk, keeping it drier, but give people a place to actually sit and watch as kids play, et cetera. So, that's yet to come. Herald Court Center. As we look at that, the Refinery Market soft opening was October 1st. Of course, they have specific furniture and decor and art pieces that are on display and seem to be very eclectic, that people like to go in and look at and hopefully purchase. The subway unit will unfortunately be vacated on November 1st. We, I don't have details as far as what the rent amount, et cetera, will be right now, but of course, we will have that out there. But the equipment that will be left on, from the original fit-out, because they've been there essentially from the beginning, is the bathrooms, of course, are there. Two bathrooms currently fit out. We have a large freezer in the back that, of course, could be dialed down for refrigerator use, freezer use, and there is some counter space and lighting in the front. The counters may end up being taken by another store, but if not, they will remain their immovable counter-type thing with some glass shielding on one portion of the splash cards where they use to display their condiments, et cetera. So that would remain, and we'll have that out November 1st to solicit interest and see if we can refill that space.
So we're 100% occupancy for at least 30 days, huh?
Right. We're still 100% occupancy.
Or 31 days.
Yes, sir.
Greg, foolish question. Anyone on the waiting list for square footage down there?
Not that I'm aware of, not at this time, but certainly we want to work with someone that would be interested as they transition in and we discuss rent and, you know, what we can do for the first month while they're moving in, et cetera. So, it's one of those things, boy, do we have a deal for you, you know? So we're hoping to get someone interested quickly and refill that space, and we're sorry that we had to lose the tenant that was there.
Yes.
I have one question, please.
Sure.
A resident asked me yesterday if we could take a look at something on the Harbor Walk in Gilchrist Park, and I don't know who would be relevant to this, whether it's Public Works or it's Canal or whatever, but there's a spot on the seawall behind the Bayfront Center, about somewhere within 100 yards of the Bayfront Center, that apparently the seawall drops down to about one or two inches above the sidewalk, and there's concern that the rest of it is more like 18 inches or two feet above the sidewalk, and there's concern that where it slopes down to, it's only an inch or two above the sidewalk, that someone may trip and fall into the water or in the rocks or whatever, and I'd like to have somebody please take a look at that and see if they could address it.
Yep, we certainly will.
Thank you.
The original specification, I was on council when we talked about it, was that that wall was about 18 inches high, I believe, above, so that it was, it was, and there's a five-foot grass area, and FDOT required that when we did the, initially. It was because if somebody's coming along on a bicycle or they're walking and they actually trip and fall, they didn't want them to fall over the seawall so that grass areas is for somebody who may fall to fall into the grass, and so...
Apparently, for some reason, the one section of the seawall slopes way down to like one or two inches.
I don't know if that was that way from the beginning or...
Yeah, I don't know. I'm guessing it probably was because I don't think, I think we did, did we do seawall replacement there, Rick? Do we know?
Yeah, we did. That, that was the original...
In the Bayfront Center?
Yes. What happened was the, that seawall was in really bad shape.
I knew you were back there.
And so, City Council went on ahead and approved doing that, the section of Gilchrist Park Area 2 seawall before Area 1 because we were waiting on FDOT, and the, and the seawall was in such a state of disrepair that if we waited until after Area 1 was done to do it, it would probably end up, ended up costing us more, and the sea, it would just give that much more time for the seawall to deteriorate. So, I'll let that, Public Works Director.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, Rick, you're the Director of Public Works. That is correct. We did do the area right behind the Bayfront Center first. That was a completely separate project. I'll review the, the plans to refresh my memory on the, on the elevation difference. I, I just can't recall at the time, but they were two separate projects, and yes, we were under different rules, regulations under DOT money than, than our own money. So I'll, I'll check into that, get you an answer. And if I could go back to a previous discussion about a dock being broken at Lashley Park? Yes, there is a dock broke there. Our city engineer is working with Marine Contracting Group, and we're trying to come up with a solution to fix it. The original contractor and such, we can no longer get, you know, replacements, so we're coming up with a solution, and Mark, our city engineer's working with Marine Contracting Group, trying to get that fixed and come up with a proper and safe solution to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when FDOT is who specified the, the design when we did the seawall, or seawall in, in advance, so, anyway. Go ahead. Back to you, Greg.
And then, of course, we have the minutes for the regular meeting from September 9th.
Are there any more questions for Greg about the, the report, anything? Charlie?
No.
Bill?
No.
No? Well, thank you, Greg.
Yep.
All right, good job. So, we had the approval of the minutes as the next thing on the agenda. We'll take a motion?
Yeah, I'd move that we approve the minutes of the September 9th regular meeting.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of September the 9th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And we have an invoice from our city attorney.
Move approval of the invoice from Icard Merrill.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the invoice from Icard Merrill. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And now we have Commissioner Comments. Bill?
Not a thing.
No? Okay. John?
Nothing.
Nothing? No? Lynn?
Nothing.
Nothing? Charlie?
Nothing.
I didn't forget you this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You gave me a complex.
And with that, then, our CRA meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene as the Okay, we are back, and the City, the City Council is back in session, and we will begin our public hearing agenda. We have an ordinance. This is the second reading for Chapter 6.
Yes, this is GA-08-2020, the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. The ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 6 of the Punta Gorda Code relating to the use of waterways, operation of vessels, construction within waterways, seawalls, and canal maintenance, rewriting and reorganizing substantial portions thereof, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Good morning. For the record, McHale Finkel, paralegal. As you said, this is a second reading. What was included in your agenda packet as far as the Exhibit A reflects the changes that City Council directed from the, the first reading. So, I don't have any other presentation. If there's anything you want to discuss further.
Any discussion, please?
I went back and did a little research and history on this since we had our last meeting about it, and I went back to the November 6, 2019 City Council meeting, and I watched, I actually sat and watched the, the minutes from the entire meeting yesterday in my spare time, and at that meeting, it was discussed that we would not support mooring cover assist systems. There was not consensus, and the gist of the conversation evolved around to that we would like to have the city staff go and do a presentation to both the PGICA and the BSIA boards, and do a presentation on these, on these proj, on these items, on whatever you want to call them, on these mooring systems, and that has never been done. And I, I support this document other than that particular subject, and I think this needs to be removed from the document so we can move this, this document forward without it. I think this warrants further discussion and further research, and also presentations to both of those boards that I mentioned, because this is something that will affect a lot of people in the canal system in both places, and I think it's a very dangerous precedent to set without doing enough research on it that we know what we're talking about. There were a lot of questions that this council asked last year, and Gary Wine was sitting in John's seat at that time, but I, I listened to every single statement that was made at that meeting, and I can tell you that it was not unanimous, and I, I actually made a copy of, let me find it here, and I'll pass this out. I made a copy of the... I made a copy of the excerpt from the meeting that happened that day. And I'll give, pass three down that way, and I'll pass a couple down that way.
Thank you.
And Greg and David. This is the actual excerpt from that City Council meeting. This is the actual excerpt that was in the minutes from that City Council meeting. And if you read through it, it's not a lot of reading, but it basically said that we needed to have further discussion and research done on this. There were numerous questions the council asked. And there was also a question about what would happen in the case of a hurricane, and how do, how do these systems get monitored, and, and how do these systems get observed by the canal maintenance and the code enforcement boards? So, there was, there was still a lot of questions that needed to be finalized. So, I would, I would respectfully ask that this document, starting on pay, on line 888 of, of the Amendment A, that that section be removed, and we discuss this completely separately, and possibly go back and re-add it at another time.
Are there thoughts on this? Jaha?
I mean, I think that this is a reasonable accommodation. I, I, I mean, if anything, possibly, this is really about the size of boats and not about something else. I, I think that this, that especially, this came up because we had someone bring this need, and I think it's very reasonable that if someone needs additional assistance in being able to cover their boat, I think this is a, I don't find this to be something that's out of line or needs an additional side conversation. I think it's, is a reasonable accommodation that we need for our community, especially being the age that we are.
But, we, we specifically asked the city staff to go and do presentations to both of the boards. That has not been done. We did not ever receive additional information on these mooring system covers. And, and I really think that that needs to be done before we approve them. I don't like the fact that this got slid into the document very quietly, so we could approve it without any more discussion. And I do think that while it may be reasonable for some, there's a vast majority of people that are not in support of this. And I would, and I think until we have a way that we can monitor it by code enforcement, which we don't have, I thought, I don't think it should be in this document.
We don't have any way to monitor anything on the boat side.
I know.
Okay? So, to single out one item, it, I feel is inappropriate. I also feel it's very important, we have committees, our canal advisory committees have studied this and have recommended approval. And that's why it is in this document. And we have, that's why we have these committees, to do, to vet things for us and make recommendations to us.
Well, again...
And I know that there are people that, that's, you know, I feel, it is, it is a, it is a, we already allow mooring covers, and this is just a mooring cover. It's, it's no different, in my opinion.
Well, it's not just a mooring cover. That's the problem. It's, and, and I don't think that there's enough information available to us that it, that we should approve this without having further discussion about it.
Debbie?
Well, I take exception to the fact that because the committees approve it, we're obligated to go along with it, because they are not representative of anybody. They come before us, we say, yes, you can serve on the committee. They don't, they don't go out and solicit, you know, opinions from people who are, number one, going to have to look across the canal at some horrible wind-tattered, barnacle-covered thing that's been stuck in the water, like everybody else is worried about doing. And I think you have to consider the difference between the role in our city government of a committee and this council. We have a responsibility to the people who say to us, please don't do this. They don't.
I hear you. John? You look like you want to say something.
Yes. As I think, I understand what Lynn is saying, and certain parts of it make sense. But, we do have mooring covers already. This, we've looked reasonably carefully at the mooring cover assist systems. And it's not anything more than a, a mooring cover that you see now, except it makes it a little easier for those that are handicapped to put over their boat and snap it down. It doesn't stick up high. That was one of the comments, I think Gary Wine made, that it should not go over the lift level. And these don't, they're just right on top of the boat. It is not for big boats, it's just for very small boats. So, I think the discussions that we've had already are sufficient in this case, although I know it, it didn't go through exactly the process. And we do, by the way, I think we do rely on our committees to make recommendations. And we got to, otherwise, why would we have them? And so, we need to support them, too, if they made that recommendation.
Jaha?
Also, I think our role is not simply to be a polling body. I mean, we, we consider all these comments, but we also have to think about the larger implications on the city and the residents, as well as research, expert advice, and things like that. And I think, out of the combination of all these things, comments in addition to what's going to be better for the general good, I think that we need to keep this in here. I think this is something that our community needs, especially with the age of our community.
Lynn?
I think we have to develop some specific criteria for approval of these things. We have no, we have nothing. All of this, all this says is that they can put them in. And what we discussed at that last meeting in November was that we wanted specific criteria developed for what we were going to permit at some point in the future, if we were going to move it forward. We did not do that. There were three different systems that were introduced at that meeting, and two of them were basically vetoed. But, there were, the discussion was, let's find out what other options are out there, and let's do some more research on this. We didn't do that. So, how can we approve this with, with the mooring system covers in place? And I, I don't, I don't get it. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Mikhail, what kind of research have you done in order to put this into the...
Well, the language that we developed, based on the, the feedback we, we received, was that the three options, you remember, we showed, that, that there was no support for anything that resembled a boat or a dock cover, a permanent thing that there was all the time. The language that this developed came from City of Marco Island, is where I found it. So, the only, the language as written, the only thing that would be allowed is this, is the system that showed that rolls back and forth and can stay below the seawall. If, we cannot narrow it to a specific product. We cannot, you know, by, by virtue of saying it has to meet this, it can only be from one provider that's out there.
But, you can make the specifications so tight that it would make it difficult for...
Limiting it to one product that, you know, is out there, so...
Would this have to be permitted? Like, if you wanted to put this on your dock or your boat, would you have to get a permit?
It's part of the structure.
So, the answer would be yes.
So, we could make, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, then, if I, as a neighbor, call and say that during the last hurricane, the cover was shredded, and the parts in the water covered with barnacles, and it's a horrible eyesore, then, because it was permitted, we would have the right to say to them, you need to fix this?
Well, beyond...
That would be code enforcement, whether it had an actual permit, that the provision in here provides that it cannot be tattered and torn. So, through, through code enforcement, that's just, same way as when the properties have, some properties, I believe, can have a canopy type of system. I forget what it's called in the code, but it's, it would be treated that way. It can't have mildew and debris and that.
Well, I think that that's one of the, the items that we discussed at the last City Council meeting. And I know I've had conversation with, with Greg since about the issue of code enforcement on the waterside. And I think that's something that, I think, Lynn, you brought up as well. That's an important issue. And how do we...
Yeah.
How do we do that? And, and how do we really get at that? And I think that there are other communities that do permit their code enforcement officials to actually enter the property of an individual, to look at the, the waterside, because it, other than being on a boat, how would you get there? So, I think that that's an, that is a, an important issue.
And until we have an enforcement ability to monitor these, I just don't, I think it's inappropriate to put it in this document. I'm not saying we're never going to do it, I'm just saying, we need more research done on it and more discussion about it as a separate item, separated out of this document. It's my personal opinion.
John?
I would just comment again that these covers, as we've seen them, are the same as any other cover that people put over their boat. There are some metal brackets on the side that allow them to move over the top easier, but they're down on top of the boat, just like any other boat cover will, we now allow.
Mm-hmm. I, I would agree that we should have a separate discussion on code enforcement on the waterside that, and, and working with Greg on how can we do that? So that we can make sure that not just this, but there are other issues where there are perhaps things in the canal, system, people putting extra lifts and things in that maybe weren't permitted, that, or there are water, there are pipes that come down from the, the pool, and they're being drained into the canal, those kinds of things. And, and so, I think that's a, something that we haven't really done a good job of monitoring. So, I would absolutely want to have some kind of discussion, or at least ask Greg to really look into that. Jaha?
I, I move for approval for, for GA-08-2020 unchanged.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve GA-08-2020. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the motion passes three to two. Greg, can you then follow up with the, the code enforcement item?
Yes, we've actually already started those discussions, based on your previous concerns about some of the pilings that were not painted, when we discussed that and wrapped with tape as part of that whole process.
David, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, as the, basically, the code enforcement prosecutor for the city, I, I didn't want to leave the impression, either with the council or with the public that may be watching, that items relating to docks and, and moorings and boats themselves do not go unenforced. There's no shortage of neighbors filing complaints with our code staff, and, and we do follow up, and when we find a violation, we do bring them the code enforcement board.
Thank you.
That's not to say it couldn't be improved. I just wanted to let you know that we are indeed enforcing the provisions that are in the current code, and will continue to do so.
And thank, thank you for bringing that up. There are some people who are very willing to call code enforcement or to send in emails. There are a lot of, I, at least, have people comment, contact me, that they are reluctant to want to say anything. And, and so, they, they come to a council member to say something. And so, I think, and I, I have made it clear to people personally, that I am not code enforcement. I don't want people to be afraid of me as I'm driving down the street to say, okay, here she comes. So, but I am, you know, willing to be helpful, for sure. So, but thank you for looking into that, Greg.
Mayor, just a point of order. I was just informed that the live stream for the meeting is not working.
Ah.
That is correct. We're aware of it. It hasn't worked the entire meeting.
It has not.
No. It is working on it.
Okay.
The live stream, the, the recording will be put up after the meeting, it's just not live streamed.
Okay.
You do.
So, can anyone hear anything at all? Nothing? They, they can't see anything or hear anything, then?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
And you should have an email that reflects that.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be posted after the meeting.
Thank you for letting us know. All right, then, we will move to item number two.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, recertifying, recertifying the city's Title 4, excuse me, Title 6 slash nondiscrimination policy and plan due to change in executive leadership, authorizing execution and implementation of the policy and plan, and providing an effective date.
Good morning, Julie Ryan. For the record, as a subrecipient of federal funds, the city must maintain a Title 6 nondiscrimination policy and plan. Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 is the federal law that protects individuals from discrimination on the basis of their race, color, or natural origin. Typically, this is readopted every three years, or when there is a change in any of the, what they call the executive, chief executive officer. So, the change in our city manager requires us to re-sign the policy and make the reassurance and readopt.
Is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 3C2.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item C2, uh, 3C2. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are we all okay? Are we, did, did an item get pulled, Greg, from the consent agenda?
There was a request to pull the contract...
So, item C1 was pulled from the consent agenda?
We wanted to discuss that specifically with some potential options.
So, that, okay, so, that's not going to be considered in this?
That's correct.
Okay. So, item 4C1 has been pulled from the consent agenda.
I also have one other thing that I'd like to mention with regard to the minutes. I'm not sure that, what needs to be done about it, but on line item 97 in the minutes with regard to the mooring cover assist systems, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about that, and there was a kind of a passive, one, one-line statement made in the minutes about that discussion. And I think there should have been further elaboration, because we had quite an extensive conversation about it. So, I would ask that those be amended to reflect that.
So, I know that Sarah is watching, or, actually not watching, she's, I think she is able to listen to this. Is that, is that correct?
In, in here, yes.
Yes, she can hear. Okay. So, Sarah, if you can, please amend those minutes, and, so that we should probably then pull that from the, pull that from the, this agenda, and have those minutes expanded on a little bit. I know that the, these are to be action minutes, and not really necessarily he said, she said kind of minutes, but to add a little bit more meat behind that...
Yeah.
Would be, is what you're really requesting.
Yeah, because there was a fairly lengthy discussion, and whether there was consensus or not, you know, it, it just needs a little bit more to it, rather than a, a passive one-sentence statement.
Okay. So, we will pull that, and we will ask that that be put on the next agenda, then, on our next meeting. Okay. So, then, we have A1 that has been pulled from the agenda. So, is there anything else on the consent agenda that you wish to have pulled?
You're pulling C1, right?
C1 has been pulled. And they'll be discussing C1 with Waste Management.
Yes, I believe...
Stephanie. So, I'll move approval of the consent agenda minus A1 and C1.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus A1 and C1. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And did you wish to comment?
Yes. Addressing the, the consent agenda item, Amendment Number 1 for the Waste Management Agreement. Initially, the agreement was approved by City Council in 2015 and awarded to Waste Management, Inc., for the residential and city recycling facilities. This year, the contract moved to a renewal period. The contract allowed for a three-year renewal or a five-year renewal, whichever period is longer. And in this case, the five-year renewal would apply, because the initial period of the contract was five years. In the initial period of the contract, it was negotiated with a, an increase each year of 58 cents. It was negotiated upfront with that increase being, would take effect on, at the, the October 1st of each year. During the renewal period, the contract allows for a price increase each subsequent year of that five-year renewal period. of that five-year renewal period. And the contractor can provide the request to the city ninety days in advance of their request. We would look at their request and if it's justified, looking at the CPI index, we would consider if it's justified or approved or not approved. In this case, they did provide us the information and the price increase of fifty-eight cents was approved during the budget process. For the renewal of the contract, procurement and Waste Management have been negotiating during the five-year contract. Waste Management proposed a set adjustment as it was in the initial portion of the contract. The contract does not allow that. The current agreement does not allow for that. It allows for adjustments each year for five years. So based on that information, the contract also allows the city to cancel the contract with certain, certain things in place. We can cancel for convenience. We can cancel if there's performance issues and then also if there's not, if there's not a mutually agreed upon increase during the five years, the city can also cancel within ninety days. So based on the five-year renewal with the annual adjustments, Waste Management has requested a contingency or a clause to be inserted in the agreement to be able to cancel that if again, the city and Waste Management does, does not come up with a mutually agreed increase for that year. The original amendment was submitted to council, putting that language into the cancellation for convenience clause. But during discussions, there were valid points that were, that were brought forth. So going back to negotiations with Waste Management, we feel that it would be in the best interest of both parties and Waste Management has agreed to amend Article Seven of the contract, which is the agreement pricing and terms of the agreement, to put in place additional time for the city to negotiate the pricing in future years. We'd like to amend that area for a ninety-day notice to a hundred-and-twenty-day notice that will allow the city to negotiate and then go through the budget process with enough time. And then also adding a section that, that in the event that a mutually agreed price adjustment is not approved, the contractor has the right to cancel the agreement within ninety days, which would, a minimum of ninety days, which would be effective October first and allow the city to go through the bidding process without the, without the interruption of service to, to the community.
So you're going to provide an updated document in our next meeting in the consent agenda then? Is that correct?
This document was added online and sent to you, I think it was yesterday or the day before, whenever this document came out.
I believe one second.
So we can discuss it now?
Good.
I have two concerns. Is there any way that we could make this Section C Five D a hundred-and-twenty days, first of all, rather than ninety days? I have a concern, and I think this, we can control what the city does, but we don't, I mean, with all due respect to Waste Management, they've been great to work with and we have a really good working relationship, but new management could come in there and on the fly just say, okay, we're canceling the contract because we don't want to work with them anymore. It will take us at least ninety days to get bid, bids out on the street to rebid the project to another contractor. And I'm thinking more like a hundred-and-twenty days. And I'm, so I'm wondering that, number one, if we can expand that for both of us, the kickout clause being a hundred-and-twenty days for both of us prior to the end of a fiscal year. And secondly, if that would happen, by that time, we've already developed our budget for the following year and we've already developed the budget for the current fiscal year that they're canceling in. So if, if we have to have a new contractor come in, there may be a huge variance in the amount of money that we are going to have to pay to a new contractor if we had to do that. And, and so I'm wondering how we're going to make up that difference. And in my conversation with you, I understand that it would come out of the reserve fund, but that's always a fund that we just really don't want to touch if we don't have to. So the situation is, is very conceivable that we would have a situation where we have a contract that may come in fifty, a hundred thousand dollars more than what we're paying now. We don't know. We have no idea until that would happen. But, I mean, I would, number one, hope that we don't have that happen because I think we have a very good working relationship with Waste Management. But, you know, five years ago, we had to make a change because there was a non-performance issue. So that's why, that's how we ended up where we are today. So I'm just concerned with the time of ninety days and, and what do we do in the event of a budget deficit if we have to change contractors mid-fiscal year?
Kristen Simion, Finance Director. So our rates are set by ordinance, so we could always do a mid-year rate adjustment to make up the difference and obviously appropriate the funds at that time. So it would take, you know, a couple months to do that, but, because we would do our proper advertising and bring it to council for the two readings.
So we would change rates on our residents mid-year?
We could. I'm just saying that's an alternative from using reserves. So if, if, again, that's a decision that would, that could be made.
One of the other things, if we do change it so that they have to give us a hundred-and-twenty day notice prior to the end of the contract year, so that's before the budget starts again in October first, that would be then in June. And by extending the time, like you're saying, you'll still be somewhat in the budget process because we're only in June at that point. And before you get to the final budget for the next calendar year, we could actually bid out, bring it back and know what our rates would need to be to facilitate the contract for the next October first. It would still be a tight timeframe, which is why a hundred-and-twenty days would be good to give us that latitude because you'll be bringing, you know, we'll be bringing the final budget in very close to that time, but it would give us a little latitude there to do that.
Because we could always make changes up until like about August, you know, obviously we're starting to go through our final approval processes in September, so.
Yeah.
You have your final hearings this year, of course, you know, we just had those recently.
So what you're saying is, your comment is in favor of a hundred-and-twenty days, is what I'm hearing you say?
If Waste Management's in favor, they'd certainly give us more latitude.
So we would need to go back to the table and negotiate that with Waste Management then? Is what I'm saying.
I'm not sure why they would have a problem with that really, because it's on both sides of the table.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Have it be equal. I mean, I'm not just saying, you know, oh, we want ninety days, but they, they have to do a hundred-and-twenty. If everybody is on equal footing at a hundred-and-twenty days, I'd be much more comfortable with that. Just knowing that some of these bid processes sometimes take longer than we expect and sometimes we have to keep going back and forth and making sure all the documents are in hand and so forth. So I would feel more comfortable with a hundred-and-twenty day kickout clause on both parts.
On both parts.
That would give us a bit more time to try to work it into the final budget presentations so that the rates for the subsequent contract year starting October first would be.
Right, yeah. I know we have a Waste Management representative here, but I don't know that.
We do.
That our representative has the authority to actually make that, that call, so. If you want to come to the mic, to the podium and, and just make a comment, you can come to this podium over here, it's more convenient.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stephanie Kissinger. I am Government Affairs Representative for Waste Management of Southwest Florida. No, I understand the reasoning behind the hundred-and-twenty days kickout on both sides. When the city came to us and asked for the ninety-day kickout to be changed to a hundred-and-twenty day on Section C Three A, the company did not expressly have a problem with that. So I can't speculate and speak on behalf of my legal team, but I can say that I will take this to them and just, you know, an extra thirty days to them as it related to Item C Three A was not a problem. So bringing it to Item C Five D, I don't think would be met with too much resistance either, but I, I cannot make that commitment. But, yeah, we're certainly willing to discuss it. We, we always have. These negotiations have gone very, very well. So.
Yeah, well, you've got, Waste Management has been a good partner.
They have.
And they have great chocolate parties. I don't, I didn't, I mean, we haven't really talked about it with the other council members.
How do you all feel about that?
I support it.
I'm okay with it.
I just, it gives me more comfort level with, you know, kickout clauses. I was a landlord for a couple of years in my previous life and kickout clauses can be very dangerous and very scary and especially, especially when you're vulnerable to something. And, you know, I look at what's going on right now in Lehigh Acres with their trash people going on strike and there's trash accumulating everywhere and then you've got the other thing in Port Charlotte that was on the news last night. It just concerns me that I want to make sure that we're all protected equally and I don't think it should be us, you know, in our favor necessarily. I think if we do equal footing for, for all parties involved, I think it would make much more sense. I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
Okay.
No, it's a reasonable request. I think I'm, I'm seeing, Debbie, are you okay with that too?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a consensus here that, let's, you know, go ahead and, and discuss that with Waste Management and then bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay. Good. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie, for being here.
All right, yes, thank you for having me.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
All right. So now we can move to the regular agenda. Do we need a break before we move to the regular agenda? I'm seeing a yes. So let's take five. I have ten twenty-six. We'll be back here at ten thirty-one. Thank you. Okay, council is back in session. Councilors, it okay with you if we move the resiliency item up since our guest is here and --
Sure.
Okay. So we will proceed then with item 7B, Southwest Florida Regional Resiliency Compact.
Good morning. For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager, and I'm happy to introduce to you Dr. Michael Severese from the Florida Gulf Coast University. His teaching and research interests concern the history of environmental change in coastal settings, particularly in response to human development, climate change, and sea level rise. His research has helped foster environmental management and restoration efforts in Southwest Florida. In the fall of 2017, he began a three-year, noor-funded effort with the University of Florida, helping managers and planners in Southwest Florida to contend with the projected effects of sea level rise. In 2018, city staff attended a forum planning for the future effects of sea level rise, a forum to discuss Southwest Florida's preparedness concerning the region's vulnerability to the current and future effects of sea level rise and increased storms, as well as the development of the compact. The group has continued to meet to define a set of objectives and development of Southwest Florida regional planning -- a regional compact consisting of Southwest Florida's three coastal community -- counties, Charlotte, Lee, and Collier, and their 10 incorporated cities. In July 2019, City Council did approve a draft MOU, and today, Dr. Severese is requesting council to consider the ratification of the final memorandum of understanding the MOU for the Southwest Florida Regional Resiliency Compact. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Severese for his presentation on the development of the compact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Hi, good morning, everybody. Councilors, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and thanks for moving me up on the agenda. I'm supposed to teach this afternoon, and I probably better be prepared for that, so anyway, I'm pleased to be here. You've discussed the compact before. You approved the draft of the MOU over a year ago. I'm here to answer questions. I'm here to give a formal presentation, if you would like that. I'm not sure what your preferences are and what your time limits are. I could just highlight, quickly highlight, the purpose of the compact. I could go through the presentation. I could answer questions, as long as you don't ask me to sing and dance.
Yeah, I think if you would just quickly go through, just as a refresher to go through, because, you know.
Yeah, I'm happy to. And so if you have the time and will indulge me, I'm happy to go through the presentation.
Just, you know, a quick run-through.
Okay.
You don't have to get into -- go into.
Highlights.
Yeah, highlights.
Okay. You know, we're -- teachers just like to talk, right? So I don't want to -- anyway, I'll --
I know, but I don't know if you can name that tune in Five Notes or not, but.
That I couldn't do for you. Anyway, so I'm here to talk to you about this resiliency compact, this regional resiliency compact. And I don't have to tell anybody here that climate change's effects are profound and are going on now. It's not just a matter of the future. I included this slide just to demonstrate the effect of climate change on storminess. This is Hurricane Laura on one day in August, crossing over the Yucatan Peninsula into the Gulf of Mexico, and it went from a Category 1 to a Category 4, storming less than a day. And we're probably going to experience the exact same phenomenon with Hurricane Delta, which is following essentially the same path. It's been weakened, but will strengthen intensely as it moves towards the coast of Louisiana. So storminess is a function of climate change, and clearly, Punta Gorda knows about storminess. I think your transformative historical event was Hurricane Charlie, and it was Hurricane Charlie, I suspect, that got this community proactive in addressing preparedness for climate change. So Punta Gorda is really ahead of the curve compared to most communities in Southwest Florida. This is a curve just showing potential sea level rise magnitudes as we move forward to 2100, and some of those curves are pretty scary. Sea level could be as high as, or just a small amount, maybe a foot to two feet in 2100, but it could be as much as eight feet by 2100. And what governs the difference between those two curves is what kind of mitigation practices the globe intends to take on reducing our carbon footprint. So part of the problem when it comes for communities that don't really control the atmosphere all that much is how do you prepare for such variable eventualities? How would Punta Gorda or the region deal with such drastic possibilities from something that's modest to something that's extreme? So sea level rise and storminess are really the effects that are most of greatest concern to our region and our coastal counties and cities. These are pictures from -- the slide on the top is the impact of storm surge on Everglade City after Irma. I probably could have shown a similar picture for the impact here in Punta Gorda after Charlie. At the bottom, there is a picture of nuisance or sunny day flooding that's occurring throughout Southwest Florida. I suspect it's happening here in Punta Gorda, although I don't know of it specifically. This is a photograph from a chronic problem that Goodland on the island of Marco Island has had to deal with. So these are the kinds of impacts that we need to be ready for, and they're the kinds of impacts that you are already addressing in your climate adaptation plan. So again, Punta Gorda is really a lead leader for our region. I just put together just some contextualization pieces. I suppose this is something that I could quickly breeze over. Punta Gorda is environmentally and socioeconomically diverse. You have people of different economies, different diversity of people, and as far as its environmental mosaic, it's quite complex and varied. You're dealing with freshwater inundation of your interior lands, the marine inundation of developed and natural lands adjacent to Charlotte Harbor and Peace River. Again, these are all issues you're addressing already in your adaptation plan. And you've got -- I live in -- I live outside of the city of Naples in Collier County, and I understand this, where you've got this strange, not strange, but very variable mix of affluent and economically disadvantaged peoples living within your population. And I would argue, and many people argue, that climate change unjustly harms the less fortunate. And you're a relatively small city, and the kinds of problems the city is going to have to deal with require great amounts of resource. So I would argue that all of this justifies an alliance, bringing together a collection of jurisdictions that share common problems, common geography, common economy, into a compact to deal with the problem collectively. Regional compacts are in great existence. They exist around the country. They've become very prolific here in Florida. I'll argue in a moment that it would probably be in our region's best sense to adopt a compact because of the way the state might be delving out resources as we move into the future. Compacts bring people together to share practices, to share resources and information. One would argue that that's just a way of increasing your intellect and your capabilities and your experience through an alliance. There's also an opportunity to align initiatives and efforts coming together to plan, coming together to develop projects. And then the last piece here on the bottom, co-producing assessments, interventions. There's an opportunity to come together and collectively implement plans, acquire outside monies, be more competitive, lobby more effectively when it comes to dealing with state and federal government. I think I'm going to skip this, just to save time. A little bit about the advocacy for compacts in Florida. Again, they're common nationwide, particularly in coastal states. Our state government has been supportive of compacts. Governor DeSantis, Secretary Noah Allenstein from DEP, who is now the acting Chief Resiliency Officer for the state, is supportive. Our CSO, our Chief Science Officer, Thomas Frazier, have all shown interest in the concept. Up until January or February of this year, an appointee by Governor DeSantis, Dr. Julia Neshawat, was our Chief Resiliency Officer. Our steering committee had an opportunity to meet with her, and her vision and her office, the Office of Resilience, viewed compacts as the most logical operational unit as far as the state was concerned. So rather than having the state help individual jurisdictions, have the state help specific compacts. Unfortunately, Julia Neshawat resigned in early February, and that office has been vacant, probably because of COVID and being fiscally conservative and dealing with the economic shortfalls that the state has to deal with. But we're hoping that her vision and that her vision remains and that the Office of Resilience carries on, carries this flag of the value of compacts. You should have in your briefing package a copy of that letter of endorsement, so. So this is the -- this may be one of the more compelling reasons for joining a regional compact, because it may be the vehicle to bring resources from the state to Punta Gorda and the rest of Southwest Florida. This bullet item is actually incorrect now. There are now four collaboratives in existence in Florida. There's a fifth under development in Leon County. So there's one in northeast Florida now. There's one in Tampa Bay. There's one in east central. And then there's the grandparent of them all, the one in southeast Florida, which has been in existence for 11 years. We would be the fifth, the Southwest Florida Regional Resiliency Compact. So it's catching on in the state. If the Southwest Florida compact becomes a reality, almost the entire peninsula of Florida and a portion of the Panhandle will be covered by regional compacts. Some of our heartland counties here in central and south Florida are not included. We've been talking with the Coastal and Heartland NEP about developing a separate compact at some point to bring in the specific needs of those heartland counties, your neighbors to the east. This is just a map that shows the distribution. Again, I don't think there's any need to go through this, but again, a large portion of peninsula Florida will ultimately be covered by these regional alliances. How compacts can come together? They can exist in various states of integration. Here on the left, a connectivity network would be a compact where people are just coming together, share experiences, share knowledge, increasing the resource -- resources available to the region, but not necessarily plan or implement anything together. An alignment network would be a compact where the jurisdictions come together and not only share resources, but plan in concert. And then a production network would be a situation where the jurisdictions come together, not only plan, but implement projects together, go out and seek funding together. And there's an organization known as the Institute for Sustainable Communities. They've been around for a long time, and they've actually helped jumpstart compacts around the country. They've done a lot of research on the effectiveness of compacts, and their reports and publications demonstrate that compacts have helped communities of all sizes, particularly the smaller communities. And they've also noted that as this degree of integration becomes more intense, the efficacy of the effort becomes greater. So there's incentive, I would argue, for greater cooperation through a compact. The southeast Florida Regional Compact for Climate Change, again, it is large and has a history. Four counties, 120 cities. They've been in operation for 11 years, and they've done remarkable things for their region. They began by doing some basic science, looking at their vulnerability, developing a regional climate action plan, something similar to what you have, but something that embraces the entire region. And they're in a situation now where they're actually designing and implementing adaptation projects. As a quick example, you've probably heard about the sunny day flooding in Miami Beach, raising the road grades, installing pumping systems. That was essentially one product of the compact in dealing with a problem as a consequence of climate change. So they are a great organization from which to learn, and they've been intimately involved with us in terms of advising us, mentoring us, and will continue to do so as we move I don't -- I believe the benefits should be obvious, again, being -- having Punta Gorda. You know, Punta Gorda is a lot like Naples in some ways. Naples, within Collier County, seems to be ahead of the game among the other municipalities in Collier County in terms of its preparedness, and Punta Gorda is probably like Naples, probably ahead of Naples. So in some ways, you're in an interesting situation. I think the benefits will be there for Punta Gorda, but I think Punta Gorda has a lot to provide for the other jurisdictions in the region. So in some ways, I view Punta Gorda as being a mentor for the other organizations and a principal player around the table about how to do things and how to do things well. So if you're feeling altruistic as a government, I think this is an opportunity to help, perhaps provide more help than benefit -- than specific benefit for Punta Gorda. So anyway, so I'm very excited about that. Just to quickly review the progress to date, Joan mentioned our activities. We are three counties and 10 municipalities. We have a steering committee that has over 50 members. I just realized I gave this presentation to Marco Island, so I've highlighted Marco Island City Council members and their city manager. I apologize for that. Punta Gorda's been involved as well. You have in front of you an agreed-upon, by the steering committee, a purpose and set of objectives, and the finalized MOU, which we're asking ratification of today. That MOU, by the way, changed only superficially from the one you approved in 2019. We just clarified some language, and we created those frequently asked questions that you received to help with the clarifications. So substantively, nothing has changed from the previous version and the one you're looking at today. There were two concerns that were voiced from the steering committee. We are very respectful for those concerns. The first one actually isn't mentioned here, and that is that all jurisdictions will retain their autonomy, and that is correct. So the compact has no decision-making authority. It can't make a city do something it doesn't want to do, and the city and the counties have an opportunity to remove themselves from the compact at any time. So this body is meant to be advisory and helpful, bring in more resources, but not govern for you. It's up to you to make those decisions. The point that is up here, and probably the one that's of greatest concern, is what kind of financial commitment are we asking jurisdictions to make? We are presently not asking any jurisdiction to make any financial commitment in this at all. We're asking for your ratification on the compact's concept. We are going out, as we speak now, and talking to various outside funding agencies, and the intention is, once we have six to eight jurisdictions on board, we would then go to a number of granters that are interested in this project and ask them for probably three years of support. A year of operationalization, a word I have a hard time saying. In that first year, we would hire a consultant, someone perhaps from the Institute for Sustainable Communities, to come in and help us develop a work plan and a structure, to define a directorship position and to run a job search and perhaps headhunt someone who's got lots of experience doing this kind of work in other regional governments, perhaps someone from southeast Florida. And then in years two and three, those funds would provide money for a lead administrator, someone I'm calling, at least for the time being, a regional resiliency officer that would head the effort, someone that can talk to government, can talk to staffers, can talk to the public, can talk to businesspeople, and someone that's conversant in the problems of urban and natural resource resilience in light of climate change. And it would also ask for money for an administrative assistant. So we're probably talking about, in years two and three, about a $200,000 budget. Okay? The water school at FGCU has agreed to provide space for this endeavor, and they're talking about, but haven't officially decided on providing a recurring operating budget so that we've got some pocket change to take care of expenses. I just quickly, just lost my train of thought. After that, the assumption then is, we go to the grantor, we tell the grantor, here's our plan. We've got eight jurisdictions of the 13 on board. They say, this is wonderful. We'll fund this for three years, but we're not going to, you know, sign the check until all or most jurisdictions are on board. That would hopefully be incentive for any of the jurisdictions that are hesitant to sign on. So this is kind of a chicken and egg problem. We're here asking for ratification from jurisdictions so we get a critical number. That critical number will help incentivize the granters, and then the grant will help incentivize whatever remaining jurisdictions are not on board yet. So that's the plan. We are currently -- we've been, I think there's another bullet down here. Yeah, this seventh bullet is actually, should be changed as of last night. So at the moment, there are four jurisdictions that have ratified. Charlotte County was first, Sanibel second, Marco Island was about two weeks ago, and Everglade City was last night. So you could be the fifth. Benita Springs and Astero have scheduled meetings on October 21st, where they'll consider ratification then. That could bring on two more. The city of Naples is scheduled for a ratification vote on November 4th. They've been very supportive. Collier County is trying to get something on their agenda. The communities that are left with some level of uncertainty are Cape Coral, Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, and Lee County. Cape Coral and Fort Myers are talking as if they want to wait until there's a change in their representation on their councils in November. I think we've -- we may have some -- I'm not sure, frankly, what's going on with Fort Myers Beach. And Lee County, to be honest, has been very reticent to come on board with this, but again, Lee County will have a change in its Board of Commissioners come November, and the expectation is that at least a couple of the new people coming on will be proactive and wanting the compact to be a reality. So that's where we're at. So our ask today is to ratify the MOU, and I'm here to answer questions. I also wanted to thank the Coastal and Heartland NEP for their resolution. They gave a public comment early on. And then your city manager read some comments from one of your citizens, and I'm happy to address those questions that that person asked and happy to answer your questions as well.
Well, I think when you started this and you started sending emails out to people, I started getting those, and the first thing I thought of was, I just want to let the council members know, that Joan has been our leader in our -- Joan LeBeau has been our leader in the climate adaptation planning, and you -- Joan has presented at organizations, and I just felt like I'm not the subject matter expert. Joan is, and so I asked our city manager if it wouldn't be more appropriate that Joan participates. So I think, Joan, you've been participating in this all along as a representative.
Joan's been great.
Yeah, so I just want to let everybody know that Joan LeBeau Yeah, so I just want to let everybody know that Joan LeBeau has been our representative in this as this has gone all along, so.
And I also, as a representative to Chenep, sat in on the first presentation that he made to the executive board in January. It was a little bit different presentation at that point, but I was very honored to get to vote yes for it at that time.
Yes, thank you for that.
Jaha?
Very much in support of this. When you had that variation of, I guess, the philosophy, I was just wondering if it's in this new stage, if the action, I guess it can be more action-oriented. Sometimes my only concern with some of these things is that we get too sociological and not engineering enough. And I say this because I did a lot of work in Heartland, and they actually have best practices for being able to mitigate these things. And I think that, I don't want us to get so lost in studying this that we don't actually look to communities that actually can do this and really think about, if we have a goal to make sure our communities don't suffer from this, that we just go for action as opposed to kind of going around it.
And that really is the purpose of the compact, to be upfront. The time for science is over. What parts of the region lack are some of the vulnerability tools to be able to assess exactly where their assets are at risk. So the one thing the compact will help with will be to get those vulnerability tools into the hands of all governments within the region. You have something like that already. Collier County, through these NOAA projects, has that already. The City of Naples has done an independent vulnerability analysis and is working on an adaptation plan. This is about action, it's not about science. And in fact, my hope is that this becomes successful, the money comes in, we hire a brilliant person, and that brilliant person takes this over, and I can go back to my day job. I love doing this, but I'm not the action item person. I'm the science geek that can help you understand something you already know.
Thank you so much for all you do.
So it's definitely about action.
So I have a question. Other questions? About, we already have a regional planning council.
Mm-hmm.
Jaha, I think you're our representative.
Yes.
And now we're creating another organization in the regional planning council. I was our representative for a couple of years. And at that point in time, I felt like it was an organization looking for a purpose. So now we're going to create another regional body. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
We're looking for people, and it's like, they may, the regional planning council might not have the right proper skill set. I don't, because this could be a topic that they might not have expertise in, but I just, you know, thought of that organization, and as I was going through this, it kind of made me think, oh, here we are, coming up with something else, so.
This is a question I was worried about having to answer, but I'll give you the answer. Keep in mind that I've not been involved with a regional planning council, and I haven't been involved in local government before this climate change thing kind of got me engaged. The truth is, the steering committee members, particularly the counties, would not consider this regionalization effort if the regional planning council was the facilitating body. And unfortunately, we were left in a situation where, at the beginning, I always viewed myself as just the facilitator to get the conversation going, but it was clear from the onset that the effort would be a nonstarter if the RPC was at the helm, which makes Southwest Florida unique, because the regional planning councils have indeed been the initiators in most of the other regions that have compacts in Florida. And I, in fact, meet with the RPC representatives of the other compacts that are involved in the operation of the compacts around the state, and we get together monthly and talk. So Southwest Florida is in an unusual situation, but the problem is too important and time-sensitive, I would argue, to wait until that trust was reestablished with the regional planning council.
That's a good way to put it. Thank you. Lynn?
I would agree with what's just been said. You know, the regional planning council has lost four of its six members because people chose not to renew their membership dues because they didn't feel that there was much of a purpose. And that concerns me a little bit. How do you foresee this group putting their efforts together? Are you going to have monthly meetings or quarterly meetings, or what's the?
Yeah, so I'm coming to you, and again, the steering committee is asking you to ratify the concept. The construct itself is still admittedly vague. That's what the operationalization phase is really all about. I envision there being some sort of committee structure or multiple committees that might serve different purposes. I view the RRO, the Regional Resiliency Officer, as the person that is helping government navigate the problems and bringing the right resources to the table. The Water School, when those vulnerability needs, when there is more science needed for vulnerability, the Water School would be there to provide the expertise. So, you know, there are operational models in other compacts, the Southeast Florida compact. I think the counties, I can't remember how the voting works, maybe the counties get two votes and the cities get one. I don't believe the, I know the cities don't contribute financially to their effort, and the money, the financial obligation is distributed among the four counties. They pay an equal sum. So exactly where we go will be left to this operationalization consultant and the steering committee. So the steering committee would continue to work with this consultant and develop a structure that is agreeable to the jurisdictions.
Okay, and as far as the people that will be involved in this from each municipality, are they typically elected officials, or are they staff members, or both?
We envision both. I think one of the things I've noticed through my work on these kinds of, this project and related projects with Collier County, is that often people that are sitting in elected positions aren't communicating well with the staffers that are in charge of doing the work, and there's this disconnect there. These NOAA projects that Joan had mentioned has implemented that kind of engagement strategy. So in the NOAA projects, we have these, we call them end-user teams, but they bring city council members and county commissioners together with staffers that are in charge of various aspects of infrastructure, and they're talking to each other and planning together. So we envision that kind of an investment in terms of staff time. So there would be someone, at least one person on the city council that would be involved, and maybe a handful of staffers that are responsible for different aspects of the operation of your city.
I have no problem with the concept at all. My only concern would be, at some point, if we have a financial investment in it that's going to be required. But I would suggest that we have Joan LeBeau and councilperson Carrie, if you would have any interest as a councilperson on that, would you be interested in participating?
Yeah.
I would suggest, since she's been involved with Chenep, that that would be the best and likely candidate to participate with Joan.
You just got volunteered. Congratulations.
No, I mean, I asked her. I didn't throw her under the bus. I asked her.
I'm hoping to get to continue on Chenep again next year. I hope that that's my assignment.
I would have asked.
I think that makes the most sense.
Who's the likely person who would like to volunteer?
Yes.
So Debbie, raise your hand. No, I just think that makes the most sense. And then at some point, if there's, if one or the other can't participate in a meeting, that we still have continuity as far as the organizational part of it.
Yeah, so once, I'm looking to Joan, once we have, I'm thinking after November 4th, I'm hoping that Astero, Benita Springs, and Naples are all onboard by November 4th. We would then reconvene the steering committee and talk about restructuring or augmenting the steering committee so that we can get the right people onboard for this operationalization piece, and then move forward with the request of the grant. And so maybe at that time, if someone from the council wants to join, that would be great.
And we've always taken a leadership, clearly a leadership role internationally, actually, in weather adaptation, climate adaptation, so there's no reason why we shouldn't continue taking that leadership role.
And I would argue that, you know, the jurisdictions that are out in front, you, Naples, Collier County, should be well-represented as we go into that next phase, because you've already learned lessons that could be helpful.
One more thing. If I'm going to say, regarding the regional planning council, their focus, and they've actually gotten funded by the Florida Department of Emergency Management and by Economic Development Administration, Department of Commerce, their focus really is on COVID response in regard to economic resiliency, hurricane, food security, and pretty much any kind of evacuation planning. So if there was any intersection, it would be the hurricane-storm aspect of it. That would be where they intersected, so that's kind of their.
I've actually had a conversation with Margaret Wetsel. And I know about this new grant, which is exciting, and I've talked to her about the vulnerability tools that will be developed for the entire region that might help her with that COVID emergency management piece. So although RPC won't be at the helm for this, RPC will be part of the group that is interacting, because if this does become their new principal objective, understanding what the landscape looks like during an emergency would be helpful.
John?
Yes, I'm certainly in favor of this MOB going forward, and my questions are more futuristic, I guess, in the sense of how do we do some things, and it's too soon to talk about those. Except maybe to first ask, you hope to have the first three years of finances covered. What do you envision actually happening after that? Are you going to come back to the members, and, or do you think there's other grants out there that are really going to drive this forward?
Yeah, I would, I'm committed, and the Water School is committed, to help find the financing. And hopefully, the RRO, that, once that person is hired, is well-connected when it comes to organizations, private and public, that could help continue to fund the effort. If you look at the Southeast Florida compact, they started in a similar sort of way. They had funding from the Kresge Foundation, there's another foundation that's slipping my mind, and they ran the show with private foundation money early on. And over time, some of those funders have weaned away. However, they're in their 11th year of operation, and Kresge Foundation is still providing them with some funding. So there is a chance, a likelihood, of extending the generosity of extramural funders, hopefully. You know, if and when government has to swallow the costs, how exactly that's distributed among the 13 jurisdictions, I would argue it has to be based on demographics. So, and like I said, the Southeast compact, through their negotiations and design, don't charge the cities anything at all, because the cities' revenues are so small compared to the counties themselves. So it's the counties that are carrying the financial weight on their back.
Of course, we also like to say, we are all residents of the county and pay our county taxes just like everybody else who lives in the county. So just, you know, the county's revenues come from all of us equally in the county, except for one portion that's more law enforcement-related, so.
Good point. Double taxation.
There you go. There you go.
Maybe just also to touch on the one question we got, or comment we got from the citizen, you talked more about mitigation.
Yeah.
And that's what, if I understand, your lingo, the science of it all versus doing things.
No, yeah, I'm sorry. Mitigation, that's a loaded term. It means different things to different people. But climate people, when they say mitigation, they're talking about reducing the severity of the impacts that come our way in the future, which means carbon budgeting. It means a greener economy. And so the Southeast Florida compact, for example, let's just say they're more progressive in their mindset and always have been, and mitigation was always part of their compact's mission, and they, as a compact, are doing things to reduce their carbon footprints. Cities are changing their practices. They've got greener public transportation that have been a product of the compact, and so on. Our region is still a little apprehensive about the climate scientist's definition of mitigation. There are still people that don't think humans are responsible for climate change and don't understand or don't appreciate the connection between greenhouse gases in our atmosphere and climate change. And if you read our document carefully, you can see the words mitigation appearing, but, and I'll just come out in a minute, they're kind of masked, and they're masked because we, again, didn't want to chase anybody off. You know, marijuana is supposed to be the gateway drug to heroin, right? I would argue that adaptation planning is the gateway drug to mitigation. Once communities, once, I can't believe I just said that.
No, I think to go along with what you're saying, when we were first approached years ago, what, was it 2009, maybe?
2007 and '08.
2007 and '08, actually. I remember that, it was the first conversations with Dr. Lisa Beaver. And so, and they wanted to come and do a climate change program, and we said, don't call it that. Call it weather adaptation. Call it something, because everyone can agree that weather is cyclical, with things, talk in terms that everyone can agree. Don't use terms that are going to cause.
Contention.
Contention, and people to, not to put up, you know, barriers. We want people to come to the table to discuss topics as opposed to talking in terms that are going to polarize. And so that's, we started with that conversation back then, and that really got the program off, I think, to a much better start, and a lot of people in the community participating.
If you look at the titles of the compacts that are existence in Florida, the only compact that has the words "climate change" in it is the Southeast Florida compact. All of the rest of them use the word "resilience." And that's why we have the title we have. We started out as a compact for dealing with the effects of climate change, but the group decided, for better or worse, to be conservative and to make sure everybody was engaged and sitting at the table from the beginning, to get rid of the phrase "climate change," and put in the word "resiliency" instead. And my joke about the gateway drug to mitigation, we found this to be very true in Collier County. Collier County is saying, we know climate change is occurring, let's not talk about why, okay? We know climate change is occurring, it's creating vulnerabilities for us, and we have to be sustainable, economically and socially sustainable. We need to adapt to those changes. And they've gone through the vulnerability and adaptation planning mindset. And now they're recognizing that, mostly with the Army Corps report, which just came out, I don't know if you're aware of that or seen that, you know, all of a sudden, the county is recognizing that the kinds of outcomes that may be with us 2060 through 2100 are so extreme that there's no way to sustainably adapt to those kinds of changes. And all of a sudden, the mitigation light bulb goes off, so. So, but for the person that submitted that public comment, and for you, counselor, mitigation is intended to be part of the suite of things the compact addresses, but maybe that's a little further down the line. The second thing that a person asked about was water quality. The steering committee, the compact will address the implications of sea level rise and changes in precipitation and seawater inundation from storms, and how it's likely to affect water quality, the potability of aquifers and water resources. But the compact, at least for the moment, is not going to directly address harmful algal blooms. And it was decided that if this compact is viewed as the great problem solver for all of Florida's woes, harmful algal blooms, frankly, is a tough nut to crack, and we didn't want, at least at the onset, to have the compact distracted, if you will. So there will be aspects of water quality that the compact will address. And it is true, climate change is exacerbating the harmful algal blooms, so there is a connection there between the two. But we were worried as a steering committee about being expected to deal with that monumental problem along with this monumental problem.
Any other questions, Debbie?
I would make a motion that we.
Before you do that, Mayor, if I might, I have a question. Pardon my back, but I'm.
Since you're Mr. Environmental lawyer.
No, this is as in my capacity as a city attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that the record is clear. The draft that we have before us, which is dated June of this year, is the. draft that we have before us, which is dated June of this year, is the most recent draft that we're being asked to ratify?
That's correct.
And the question I have, based on some questions and comments by city council members, as well as the speaker, relates to Section 9, Funding. Says the compact members do not hereby commit any financial resources to the operation of the compact, and shall seek alternative funding sources through grants, philanthropic funding, and other means to fund the operation of the compact. But it appears that that provision has been somewhat qualified by our, the memo that was attached to the agenda item, which says that you're asking government to endorse the MOU's concept, and without an expectation of financial support through the compact's first couple of years. You've actually said three years, but I think the record needs to be clear at this point in time, if the city council is going to ratify this memorandum, that there will be no expectation of a financial responsibility beyond year two or three.
Exactly.
I would hate for the council to come back and be forced to commit, based on their ratification of this agreement, that would suggest otherwise.
So you're asking us to agree, but also insert with no commitment to funding?
I think the record should clearly state, if it is indeed the consensus of the council, that they are ratifying this memorandum of understanding, but without any commitment or suggestion of commitment to any funding in the future.
And that is the intention of the MOU and the intention of the steering committee. And I'm not sure, maybe I wrote that memo, I'm not sure. It may have been just a poor phrasing. I'm not sure where that memo came from.
Well, but your testimony today also suggests that after the grant funding or other outside funding runs out, at least I understood you to say that there might be a request from the local governments to pitch in for the financial support.
I heard that, too.
That's also correct.
So the only thing I'm asking, the only thing I'm asking for is if the council so desired that, when they stayed on the record, their approval of the ratification, that they do so without any suggestion of being committed to future financial support.
I thought he cleared that up when he said that it would be up to the counties.
It's not, not in stone yet.
And so, what the city attorney, Mr. Levin, is saying is correct. There is no financial commitment now, and there never will be.
It needs to be in our motion, though, to make it official.
It needs to be in the motion.
We will, however, you know, might be in a situation where we're forced to fund the compact in some other way. And maybe when that time comes, then each jurisdiction considers whether they're still supportive of the compact or not.
And let me also suggest that, when that point in time comes, that would not prevent the city council from offering financial assistance. I just wanted to make sure that, if and when that time comes, that your ratification of this agreement at this time, particularly with the suggestion that there might be a need for financial support down the road, isn't then presented back to you as some sort of moral commitment.
Okay.
Or pass due money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So now, can I make my motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay. It's a great honor for me to make a motion that we accept the Southwest Florida Regency Resiliency Compact Memorandum of Understanding, with the understanding that it is without any financial commitment.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the Southwest Florida Regional Compact Memorandum of Understanding without any financial commitment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
We're proud to support it.
And thanks for volunteering, Counselor Carey.
Thank you for the discussion. Thanks for being here.
Oh, it's been great.
Yes, thank you for volunteering, Debbie.
Oh, really.
I'm sure that Joan is really excited to have
Oh, yeah.
A colleague.
Anyway, enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go now to our regular budget appropriation, budget appropriation of funds for FY 2021 grant awards.
I'll turn it over to you, Kristen.
Okay. Kristen Simeone, Finance Director. Back in September, September 9, council meeting, the two grant award agreements from the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee were approved for fiscal year 2021. And we said at that time, we'd come back to you to actually appropriate those funds, because it was already outside of our budget process. So this agenda item brings back those two items. So there was grant agreement S392106-C233, which was appropriating the revenue and the expenditures of $11,320 for the marine law enforcement activities and overtime, to include the boating under the influence details, vessel inspections, and mullet fishing enforcement details. And then the second agreement, S392109-C234, which appropriates $31,680 in revenue and expenditures for the professional services and contractual services related to derelict vessel removals from city waterways.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 5A to appropriate the funds for, from the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee, under the boater revolving fund grant program, to fund the police department's enhanced law enforcement activities program.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve Item 5A. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good morning. Julie Robinsutter, Procurement. I'm here this morning to request approval for, to continue blanket single source with Superior LLC. Superior, a wholly owned subsidiary of Central Square Technologies, and formerly known as Sun Guard Public Sector, for the purchase of integrated software products, maintenance, and support for the city. September 13, 2012, Procurement solicited a blanket notice of intended decision to single source for continued purchase of integrated software, maintenance, and support for the city's embedded technology. The software is proprietary to Superior, making the maintenance and support a single-source purchase and not available from other sources. The estimated annual expenditure back in 2012 was estimated at $211,000 and was submitted to city council for approval under the BNID until abandonment of the system. However, with recent upgrades in the system, including migration of the system to the cloud and purchase of the time clock, software expenditure in the last 12 months has increased to $290,299.72. In addition, the annual expenditure for the upcoming fiscal year is anticipated to reach $396,560. Typically, Procurement review BNIDs for changes and continuation every five years. However, staff noticed a significant increase while reviewing potential annual renewals. Procurement then worked with the department to provide an updated estimate based on the city's current use for city council's review. Staff is recommending approval of the continuation of the blanket single source for these services performed by Superior, and to pay fiscal year 2021's invoices for the reference applications as they become expired or due in the amount of $325,060. Future tasks are to include a business analysis at $17,500, further upgrades estimated at $34,000, and a contingency of $20,000 is also being requested for a total estimated spend of $396,560. I believe staff here has to answer any questions, if you have any.
Just for the record, are all these funds budgeted in the fiscal year 2021 city
budget?
Kristen Simeone, Finance. Yes, they are, most of them. There were a few items that the division will be asking for reappropriations from current fiscal year 2020 funds that they didn't finish on summer projects moving forward. So during the budget process, there was, we talked about this particular project, as far as moving to the cloud, because it was time to actually purchase equipment. And so between using the equipment money, it was, they were able to do the same type of project, but now it's in the cloud. It helps give us additional redundancy. There was also new items added, such as the Time Clock Plus, which we have not had timekeeping before. So that started last year. And the division is here, Brad is here, to talk about any of the additional items.
But there's no new appropriation needed?
Yes.
So what kind of a contract do we have with this company? And are we looking for other options that may be less expensive? This is getting really expensive every year. And how long are we locked into a contract with Superior?
So it's an annual contract. And at some point, we can talk about a whole ERP system. So that's where budgeting for something like that can run, what, a million dollars to start up a new software system citywide for all of our services. So I think Brad can help us with that information, if you needed.
I have been through that in the corporate world, and it's extremely disruptive.
I know, I know.
Yes. So besides the cost, it is, again, a timing thing, and the amount of time it takes to transfer all the data.
They've pretty much got us captive, though. That's
Yeah, it's, you know, I think it deserves explanation of why, all of a sudden, we are going from, you know, increasing the amount that we're spending with Superior so substantially. At least, you know, justify it to our residents. This is what we're doing, and why it's a benefit to our, to our community. Because it's, even though it is appropriated, or that it's budgeted for and will be appropriated, it's just, help us understand.
And certainly, Brad Schutte, the IT manager, the, some of it is, are things that have broken, have been broken out in the budgets before. Our disaster recovery item, I'm not sure whether that was part of the $211,000 back in 2012, the NOMAX. And with additional modules like the Time Clock Plus, we've been adding pieces to the software that have brought more services online. And those pieces all come with additional maintenance. The contract that we have with the company is a 5% increase per year. So it's not, they aren't gouging us or driving maintenance costs higher by any more than they're permitted to do so. But with these additional pieces, with the investment that we've made in new modules, some of what was on, is on this increase, our investment in modules for our Parks and Recreation Management Module that we're going to be adding this year, linking into our HR module, linking into our firehouse and ESO reporting for all of our public safety reporting. All of these pieces add up. And as you move those from a purchase maintenance to a cloud-based, it changes the model to a subscription model. And so it becomes a fixed annual cost, instead of a big cost, and then 20% across. So some of this shift is because of that as well. So it's, you know, since, was it 2012, was the last number? So we're eight, nine years into, and just with the changes that we've made in technology, it's just added things that have brought the cost. As far as doing business with Central Square, we've talked about, we've looked at other companies, and we've looked at, we've tried to maintain a view of what other services or what other companies are out there. Many of the cities and municipalities in our area, if any of them have decided to change to a new software, we kind of watch what they're doing and follow along. And we talk about, you know, how did it go? Is it good? Is it bad? Just recently, I'm not sure if you saw in the news, but one of the major competitors for, with Central Square, that several municipalities in Florida went with, was recently a victim of a ransomware attack that shut their ERP systems down for more than two weeks. And so, that's part of what we have to take into account, too, is how secure we feel the company is. And that's something that Central Square has done a very good job of so far. As we talked about, moving to a new company is very expensive. It is disruptive. It's a long process. But it's not something that we've ruled out entirely. We do keep that on our radar at all times. It's more kind of the devil you know.
Sure. Got to ask the question when someone asks me, so.
Absolutely.
Does this help us deliver services to our residents, so that this software helps our departments do a better job of delivering services to their residents?
All of our online services are run through this software. All of our financial services are run through this software, our credit card, you know, online payments, utility billing, just about anything and everything that our citizens touch in some way, touches this system in some way.
Okay. So that's important, service delivery.
That's why we're captive to this in some regard also.
John?
I understand all of that, and it makes a lot of sense. But as you would say before I would, that, you know, technology keeps changing. And are we comfortable that this company is staying abreast with everybody else, and has even got some things other people don't have, and expect them to continue to improve their software?
Good question. Yes, absolutely. One of the, one of the things that, if you note, when she was reading the contract from 2012, it was the contracts with Superior, that was formerly Sun Guard, which is now owned by Central Square. Over the past eight years, Sun Guard has been, has merged with other companies. The move to be a part of Central Square was primarily a move to give them the venture capital that they needed to be able to stay leading edge and to be able to work with. Because we also get all of our CAD dispatch, records management, all of our public safety software is from this same company. And so, that's part of what they're doing, is trying to put together a company and trying to work with the technology to keep us, to keep them on a leading edge of what they can offer, to keep us on the leading edge of what we're able to provide to our customers. So we are, yes, we're very comfortable with their, their ability to move that forward.
Any other questions for Brad?
I'll move approval to continue the blanket single source with Superior LLC. Superior is a wholly owned subsidiary of Central Square Technologies LLC for the purchase of integrated software products, maintenance, and support.
Just a second.
There's been a motion in two seconds to approve the blanket single source contract with Superior. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to unfinished business. Gellcris Park Harbor Walk Phase 2 parking and remaining improvements. Yes.
Good morning. For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. So we're here again tomorrow, today, with parking options for Harbor Walk Area 2 Phase V.
Forty and slip.
As mentioned earlier, under the CRA, Phase A is substantially completed. They're just working on a few punchless items. That was primarily the walkway itself, Harbor Walk. The Phase B of Area 2 is some minor park improvements, parking, and Red Esplanade. The main bulk of this project is related to parking, approximately $1.3 million in the combination of the on-street parking and the parking lots. The remainder of the project, the biggest chunk of the project that's left, in terms of all other improvements, is really related to ADA accessibility at the intersections along Red Esplanade. There are some associated drainage improvement costs, but those are really, the accessibility of those intersections and achieving compliance there is really driving all of those improvements.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question here?
Certainly.
On the cost of other improvements, does that mean we're going to get rid of all the, the extra water that we often see along Reda by doing this? So it's a bigger project than where this parking?
It's always a goal to make sure that the drainage doesn't get worse because of a project in areas where you have, this is, this is a very old system in this area, so we would anticipate there would be improvements. However, that's not a driving factor in the drainage design. But it is, you know, it's anticipated that that will be a fringe benefit of the drainage design.
Let me further that a little bit. Of course, you have the, the tide valves that are going out into the harbor. And that's basically drainage can go out as long as the water it's going into is below that. So regardless of what you do with drainage, if it can't make it out, which in some cases would mean a whole new pumping system and look at it a completely different way, we'll still have some of those issues that have to be addressed in the future.
In that case, then we have to send Mitchell to Holland to have him understand how they built the dikes, so.
That's the adaptation thing.
I'll be on the, oh, wait a second, I can't go. I'll be on the next available flight.
She's going to go. Oh, yeah, you get to, oh, Joan gets to go, then.
Joan and I get to go. I think in two weeks, Joan, easily.
There you go.
I'll go to Venice, then.
You go.
Been there, done that.
Just up the road.
You have Venice, Florida.
I've been there.
So currently, the, the project is funded for $1.25 million, leaving an anticipated unfunded gap of $950,000. So in terms of options of achieving that, we can identify other possible funding sources, undesignated funds within the one cent sales tax, general fund or parking impact fees, or looking at making some design changes to reduce costs. And the, the big target there, because it's the biggest line item, is really parking. Like I said, all of those other park improvements, there's really not a lot to cut from that and still have a viable project where, you know, we don't end up with ADA non-compliance issues or, or things like that, that we don't want to do. Yes, sir.
Again, the, the other improvements, that includes landscaping and trees and all that good stuff?
Yeah, so there's, there's landscaping costs in there. It's primarily trees. And also, a large driver of the landscape cost is landscaping around parking lots, because we like to, in any project that the city does, we like to meet our own code requirements for parking. And we have our, for landscape design and other factors. So if a private developer were building this much parking, they would be anticipated to put in this much landscaping. So we're following those guidelines. In terms of other, like, park improvements, really, you're talking about a couple of walkway connections that get you from Red Esplanade into the body of the park and into Harbor Walk. So they're not really a major, you know, we're not adding any substantial amenities to the park as part of this project.
Well, what, excuse me, again, one of the amenities, though, is the sidewalk along the north side of Reda.
Correct, correct. That, that is, that is definitely part of that $850,000 cost, is that sidewalk.
A question before we go any further. Haven't we already paid for engineering for the parking that we approved a year ago?
Yes, the, the engineering design costs are already sunk. There is, because the project was broken originally as engineered, Phase Area Two was one project.
Right.
When it was split into Phase A and Phase B, we had to go back to the design engineer and have them pull out all of that data for just the Harbor Walk. They will have to go back to the original plans for Area Two and do the same thing for Area B. So there are some minor additional engineering costs relative to the size of the scale of the project, but they're, you know, the majority of the engineering cost has already sunk.
Where I'm going with this is if we make any changes to what we already agreed to do in terms of parking, we'll have to have it re-engineered again.
Correct, yes. There will be additional engineering costs.
Which is substantial.
Timing costs.
Yes.
Debbie?
My question is, all of these costs are based on $2,018?
Yes.
Correct.
What are we looking at in today's dollars?
Staff does not have the technical expertise to give you what we feel would be a valid answer on that because of the variability of, it's not like we can apply the Consumer Price Index to construction because it's completely different. We actually had some discussions with the city manager who has some substantial experience in this. And he was like, well, don't we have, you know, this subscription to this service? And we don't, as we, as we found out, anywhere in the organization. So we can't go to those other sources to give us a more realistic picture of what cost might be in this market, anticipated within the next six to 18 months. We, we just don't have that picture.
So this is, this is one of those, as you peel back the onion, Craig?
Yeah, as you peel back the onion. Just to elaborate on that a little bit, we did talk to some of the building officials in the Charlotte DeSoto County Association, and they were looking at some of the indicators they may be able to give us. They haven't been able to provide that as of this meeting. But we'll continue to look at some of those things as we move into budget cycles and different things where we have estimates that may be dated, that we really need to know what we're looking at as a best guess, educated guess for current and, and future costs in the upcoming years as opposed to just a past cost. Right now, one of the biggest things that's going up in this region in the last quarter is the cost of lumber. And of course, you know, this, a lot of this is paving with the oil prices that haven't gone up as much. They don't anticipate that paving costs will have increased substantially. But still, overall, when you look at labor, because there is some labor shortages, because some contractors are very busy. So there's that to consider. It's almost on a piece by piece to get the aggregate of the increase. So obviously, the, they anticipate there is some increase, probably in, in the 10% to 15% range before they actually get the numbers together. But we'll be able to provide you a, a better estimate of that as they give the numbers to us. And bearing in mind that it's still based on an index, which is based on estimated cost at this point. So until we actually get the bid calls, it's just the best estimate of what we can do for capital projects.
You do understand the position that you're putting us in. I mean, we have people who are already yelling at us that it's almost, well, $956,000 more than what we had budgeted. And now we're saying, but wait, there's more?
Well, that's, that is what I've been hearing from some residents, like, these are $20,18. Come on, you know, I keep hearing this from residents, so.
I think we all are. But it's, I mean, I understand you guys can't go out every time and get the engineers to give you updated costs, but it, it would sure be nice if you would subscribe to the magazine or whatever it is, so that we have something to go by. It's like, it's like handing a blank check, and I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with that. Not in these times.
I'm comfortable with us sizing what we think the project should be. And then we've got to go from there and.
You mean deciding what we're willing to spend?
We might have to downsize after that if the price is too high.
Deciding what we want this project to be. And then we can go from there. And, you know, the problem is going to be that if we, we, we decide, and then procurement goes out to bid, and then, you know, do you, do you have a bid with a contractor that says, well, we might cut it back? You know, I mean, there's that kind of thing. Will they bid on it? So it's.
Of course, when the bids come in, you'll get another shot at this. And certainly, if you look at 10% of a million, if you did the full project, you know, 100,000, you might not consider that excessive, given a inflation index for construction, commercial construction. But if it came in at 2 million, obviously, we'd all have to go back and rethink the project, so.
May I ask how much money is left in the current 1% sales tax fund that hasn't been spent?
Yes, you can.
You have the answer, is the question.
That may be an upper name, but, yes.
Because that program is ending at the end of this year. So if there's unspent funds in there, that would make the most sense, so we don't have to jeopardize any other funds.
And there might be more money based on what we decide at the next agenda item.
Exactly.
And there'll be two things, as Kristen talks about that. The amount of money that you'll have at the end of this cycle for the 1% sales tax, remember, you had several meetings to decide where money goes if the new 1% sales tax is approved. And some of that carryover goes into the first year of that, that you've allocated. If you go to the bottom line of the first year, I mean, you're still only looking at, I think it was 75,000 that, that is left, because that carryover money was allocated to things such as City Hall renovations. So what you really have to look at at that point is how much will be spent that's in that line item? Can you cash flow that out a few years, which I believe we could? And then any additional monies that may be saved in the interim or from the next agenda item, like you stated.
Kristen Simeone again, from Finance, and exactly what the city manager just indicated. So at the, projected at the end of fiscal year 20 was 1,045,000 left out of the current 1% sales tax. Again, we finish up some year-end processing, and as some projects get completed, there might be some released funds that also might make that a little bit higher. And if you remember, we had started, for our, some of our projections, we had lowered a little bit of our projections for 1% sales tax during the fiscal year because of COVID. Some of the, the last month or two has been a little bit better than we expected, so we might have a little bit extra there. And again, during original budget discussions, we had allocated it to certain projects to start some projects sooner, as we wait for the 1%, the new 1% sales tax money to, to start coming in. So it just may delay the cash flow or have, we would have to just revisit that portion of it. Did that answer all the questions?
Some of the projects that the, I'm sorry, sir.
The 1,045,000 that you have in hand, some of that probably was assigned to some other project that we haven't done for whatever reason? Is that kind of money that we can just shift from wherever it was to this?
So the 1,045 is just from increased revenues over the whole period of our process and also other projects maybe coming in under budget or different things like that, or shift in priorities as well. So it is money that we would have in hand.
And we can, we, since Gilchrist Park renovations and Harbor Walk were already in the 1% sales tax program, we could use that money without it being questioned.
Correct. I mean, this project in its entirety was included.
Yep.
One, I was going to say, I was going to say one other thing about budgeting, too, as far as when we go out to bid. Sometimes, remember, our budgets are public. So sometimes if we budget too high, you know, or overestimate sometimes, any bidding agency kind of knows what our budget amount is as well. So we kind of want to also have that in our back pocket sometimes as far as trying to be as conservative as possible.
And what I was going to say is when you looked at that million, obviously, in the second iteration, when you looked at where you would put 1% sales tax, we move into the new fiscal year and the new sales tax cycle, some of that may be allocated. And as Kristen said, we have to look at then the cash flow. What can you realistically spend next year? You might have $2 million, and we know we're only going to spend 100,000. So even though it's there for that project, we know we can move that sum and use it as cash flow, you know, back and forth.
Mitchell, do you want to go ahead?
I was just taking a big step back when we started talking.
Sorry for the detour.
So in terms of parking, we looked at what is quote unquote existing now within Area Two. So there's 126 spaces now. The proposed design is 201 spaces, which gives you a positive 75. I would like to point out on this map, on this chart, that the on-street parking is where you see the biggest parking gains, because right now, technically, we have zero on-street parking in this area. You get 62 of your 75 net spaces from that. Another thing that I wanted to point out, and it was brought up earlier by the Puntagordo Boat Club and the public comment, is that the 126 space count is as it is today. And as it is today, the Harbor Walk in the Berry Street Extension area actually consumes area that was previously used as informal parking for the Puntagordo Boat Club. So that, that count is actually lower than what was historically in that area. But the reality is, the 126 spaces, if we just left it alone, that's what, what is out there now. So moving from east to west, on the top of this chart, you have the existing conditions. So in the yellow, it's the formal parking areas. You have the, what I call the Gilchrist Parking Lot that exits onto Gilchrist. You have the McGregor Lot, which sits between the two sports courts, the Playground Lot. There's an informal parking area, this area right here, just west of the Playground Parking Lot. That area, really, for the past 12 years or so, has been used off and on as the construction staging area for various projects that have occurred within Gilchrist Park and also historically the downtown flooding. So that portion of the park has been sort of blocked out for construction-type uses for quite some time, and now is primarily informal parking. Then you have the Bayfront Lot, and then the informal parking in the Berry Street Extension. So in the design, we have three lots, a reconstruction of the Gilchrist Lot, an extension of the Playground Parking Lot to connect to the system that becomes P3, which is parking that surrounds essentially the Bayfront Center. And then D1 through 5, that's all of your on-street parking in, in the various pods there. So option one.
Could you go back to that just a second, Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
The significance of that, when you look at it, of course, is that the P1, 2, and 3 more or less formalizes the formal and informal parking that you see in the existing condition at the top of the slide. So you're basically engineering as formal parking what exists as formal and informal currently.
So as designed, and I won't belabor this, we're adding, the design is for 201 total spaces with 75 additional. And this is the most parking of any of the options that I'll show you. And similarly, released green space. In terms of a, a cost reduction strategy, the on-street spaces are the most costly individual spaces to produce, because as designed, they fit the Phase One area, which has a paver drive surface instead of asphalt. There are also some drainage improvements that are, that are concurrent with that that need to occur. So those spaces, the cost of those in each individual space is fairly high relative to the parking lots. If you eliminate, this proposal shows eliminating 37 of the spaces, leaving the largest block of on-street parking adjacent to the pickleball courts and the playground and retains the parking lots. We anticipate that this option would realize a cost avoidance, really, a savings on the anticipated project cost of approximately $360,000 plus or minus. Again, the net increase here would be 38 parking spaces. And the following options are really, option 2, 3, or 3, 4, and 5, excuse me, are really variations on a theme of reducing the number of. are really variations on a theme of reducing the number of formal parking spaces within the lot that connects the Playground to the Bayfront Center. Those reductions, the more spaces you reduce it by, the greater the cost savings. Again, those cost savings are relatively low. This is the most aggressive of those options. It eliminates 56 formal parking spaces, converting those to grass. We anticipate that the potential cost savings there would be in the order of $300,000. And again, this would net only 19 formal parking spaces.
Including on-street parking?
Including the on-street parking, yes. This, these options retain all the on-street parking, because that's where the gain is coming from in parking count. Another option here, it eliminates 46 spaces. Again, that drives down your cost reduction and increases your number of parking spaces that you gained to 29. The least aggressive option that we showed was eliminating 27 spaces, and that's primarily to provide that green space in front of the Bayfront Center. This gives you a parking increase of 48 spaces, formal spaces, and the least amount of cost savings at around $140,000. So we took that idea, and we sort of spun it around a couple of times. And we looked at the possibility of segmenting the, retaining the sort of current shape of the park by having three individual parking lots. So one lot in the Berry Street Extension, one lot associated with Bayfront Center, and another separate lot associated with the Playground. The parking counts are roughly the same as in Option 3 and 4. So that doesn't change. It's just the impression that this gives that there is more green space in the park. It does increase the number of sort of curb cuts onto Reta by 1, which is marginal, you know, change. But those are also options. We anticipate the costs would be relatively similar. We also looked at a sixth option, which sort of shifted that idea a little bit. This is more or less in line with the least aggressive option, the 27 parking space, Option 5. But it eliminates 29 parking spaces that are more or less in that historic construction staging area, now informal parking in front of the basketball courts. We end up with one smaller Playground Parking Lot, about 14 spaces. There are 12 now, so it makes it a little bit bigger, increases that capacity. But this plan really clusters all of the parking around the area that's really driving the parking demand, and that is the Bayfront Center and Boat Club. There are a lot of public comments about the fact that this park doesn't really need that much parking. You know, I mean, that's subjective, because we know whenever there's any kind of event in the park, there's not enough parking. But the events are more likely to occur in those two facilities. They're driving the parking demand. Let's put the parking where the demand actually is. So that's the thought behind this plan. It increases the number of parking spaces by 46. You're returning right around a quarter of an acre of land back to green space in the park. So this seems to be a potentially good balance between preserving green space and meeting the known parking demands of the park.
And if I could, as you know, when you look up here, just because I want to use the red pointer, you're basically taking the green space in Option 5, and you're just flipping that over here. So you're just flipping parking with green space. Option 5 had 48 new spaces, Option 6 has 46, essentially the same cost, the same net increase in parking. It's just where the green space would be. That's the largest parking lot option, 5 and 6, other than full construction. And of course, that 46 or 48 net increase in spaces includes all the on-street.
I have a question. When, when you look as a planner and a, you know, person who does this thing for a living, can you reassure me that if we take parking for the Playground from a parking lot to off-street diagonal parking, that that is going to be safe? I was driving down the street one afternoon, and there must have been a mother's group that, because they were all parked in the diagonal parking, and they were all trying to get their strollers out and their backpacks out, and, you know, the kids were running everywhere. And I go really slowly when I go down Reta, because I am so afraid of hitting somebody, not just children.
Right.
But it just, it just doesn't seem as safe to me to have a Playground Parking Lot so small and depend on off-street, you know, the side-street parking for the Playground. That's the, you know, I love the green space idea here, but I'd almost rather do away with that, you know, a section of the off-street parking for that part of the park and make it be a lot. And I know it takes away, you know, beloved green space, but it just doesn't seem safe.
So the, the parking lot that is currently associated with the Playground is incredibly inefficient.
Yes.
Technically, it has 12 parking spaces. Usually, when you go there, you'll see less than 12 cars and cars parked elsewhere, because it's uncomfortable. It's not clear where is and where is not a parking space because of the configuration of that lot. This proposal puts at least, the minimum recommendation here is 14 parking spaces associated with the Playground Parking Lot. We could certainly increase that number if, if it's, you know, a critical concern. But that's a, that's a fair number of parking spaces. If it's an inviting parking lot, hopefully that will accommodate anyone who has those safety concerns about parking on the street. In terms of the directly addressing the parking on the street and the safety of that, parking on the street is designed to make it feel a little bit dangerous. The average motorist, when they're driving down the street, if everything feels completely safe, like the interstate, I-75, that environment has been engineered to feel safe at speed. If you go stand on the, in the emergency lane on I-75, it is an extremely terrifying place. But when you're in your passenger car, driving 70-plus miles an hour, unfortunately, you, you feel completely safe. It's a comfortable environment. Things happen as you would anticipate. It doesn't feel strange. If you get in your same car, which has the same safety features, and you try and drive down Marion Avenue at 75 miles an hour, you will be terrified, because everything is coming at you very quickly. So the character of the environment helps drive our behavior as motorists. So having on-street parking tends to make people go, things might be happening here that I don't want to happen, so I'm going to slow down. So it's a traffic calming effect. Best practice for diagonal on-street parking is actually what they call reverse diagonal on-street parking, which means you back into the parking space and then pull forward into the street. It's a common configuration in a lot of municipalities. We actually discussed it when we were in the initial design phases of this, conceptually. And city council at that time was extremely uncomfortable with that scenario, but, you know. So that's why we have the configuration that we have. One of the other options for on-street parking was just doing parallel, more traditional pattern. And that was not yielding enough spaces. So that's the balance. That's how we got to the design that we have. The parking serve, is serving those dual purpose of providing space for people to park so they can access the park, and providing traffic calming on Reta Esplanade, which was also a goal of the park improvement. If you look at the sort of per square foot costs of land in the western neighborhood here, adjacent to Gilchrist Park, versus our waterfront lots in Puntagorda Isles, they're pretty close, which is astounding, because that shouldn't occur, and that doesn't occur in most places in Florida where off-water land is that valuable. And really, that off-water land in this western neighborhood is that valuable because of its connection to the park. So there's a serious financial incentive, both on the property owners and on the city, at retaining that value and having that great connection to the park.
You may recall a discussion I had some time ago, that planners and lawyers speak different language. I think the correct question, answer to your question is that intuitively, the enclosed confined parking area is inherently more safe than Reta Esplanade.
Thank you. That's your interpretation.
From a lawsuit legal perspective.
Okay.
I would also like to point out, from a planner's perspective, more car crashes occur in parking lots.
But I think the question had to do with little kids running out into the street.
Yeah, I'm only talking about the Playground Lot. I don't care, so, I'm not as concerned. I can't say I don't care, but I'm not as concerned about the rest.
Do you want to, I think you have one more slide here. Do you want to finish your slide, then we can kind of have a general discussion?
Yeah, just two quick things. As we noted previously, these, all these costs are based on 2018 engineer's opinion of cost. The as-designed project includes an anticipated cost of $25,000 for engineering and construction documents. Any of the options that we've shown you may, will incur higher design costs than what's estimated, may require permit modifications, and those permit modifications and additional design may incur additional construction delays. All the information that I want to leave you with. This is just a nice, quick summary of those options and costs in terms of parking spaces.
We'll keep those, keep this all handy, because I'm sure we're going to be asking you to pull up different things on the screen so that we can have a discussion.
Yes, indeed.
Jaha, I think you wanted to bring something up.
Yes. One thing I want to bring up is that I'm thinking, one of the less invasive choices is really what's needed, because in truth, the real need for parking is on the east and west side of the park, not in the middle of the park. And that's just kind of known by people who are always at the park. And so to put this much parking, pretty much to replace park with parking spaces, we have to be very, very careful with that, because we really destroy the integrity of the park as a park, as well as really impact the surrounding area as well. So I just say, in this regard, just feeling one of the less invasive scenarios, we really.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
Like this, like, like 1 and 2 are just, was way too destructive. It really just makes it into one big parking lot, which then also has to be mitigated by stormwater. And so I just think with this, we have to appreciate that this actually is a park, and that it is an active park, so people do do a degree of walking. And the whole reason why we built the Harbor Walk is for people to be able to, you know, either walk, bike, chair. So putting parking right in the middle of the park is really not, so much parking in the middle of the park is really not needed, especially when the real heavy traffic areas, people really need to park are not here in this part of the park. They are going to be on the east and the west sides of the park.
Could you put Slide 11 up, just so there's a visual?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, 12.
Yeah, 12.
I moved it around.
These are options which give, which kind of respect more what I'm saying. It's like, is where we understand that there is a balance that needs to be met. We can't just pave over the park.
Yeah. I, I realize that when we made the decision to split this up into two different projects and to have the parking be a separate bid, I wasn't in favor of that. I wanted to go on ahead and do the park, the project as it stands, with all the parking and what have you. And I, I really, listening to what Dover Cole had to say, what residents, the feedback I've gotten from a number of residents, and also watching the Y. They have the kids programs. They take the children out in, in front of the Y, and they actually, at the Bayfront Center, and they play, and they have, you know, activities, that they have programmed activities in the grassy area. So it became apparent to me that we need some grassy area in there somewhere. And, and I started thinking also about the Boat Club, and the conversations with the Boat Club, and how much parking the Boat Club would like to have. And it made me think about our planning for Ponce Park, when the Peace River Wildlife Center said, you know, they want to stay in Ponce Park. Well, how much property, they would really like to have had more than an acre. But we said, no, you only get an acre because it's a park, and we need to preserve the park. So in, in this case, I understand how many parking spaces they might like to have, but it's like, this is the park. It's, you know, and that it's, we really need to do, retain the feel of the park. I understand what you're saying, Debbie, about the children's parking lot. But I, and as I have driven down Reta Esplanade myself, I notice that I feel more comfortable, if I'm going from west to east, I feel more comfortable traveling at a higher rate of speed until I get to the diagonal parking, and, and I slow down. I, I'm, you know, I'm wondering if the speed limit on, once we do this, on Reta Esplanade shouldn't be something slower, in addition to, just because it is a park, there's going to be a lot of activity, so that we encourage people taking their time as opposed to. So that's just another thought, totally aside from the discussion today. I offered up the option 6, but I'm also, I've had a lot of resident feedback that said they like option 3, except they would like to see the, a driveway between the, what is the Bayfront Center's parking lot area, and then over to the piece over at Berry Street. That's feedback I've received from a number of residents in trying to keep parking. So I'm just, I'm not looking at the dollars at the moment. I'm just looking at what do we want as far as functionality is concerned. Lynn?
We talked about this so many times since I've been on council. And when we'd split the park project in two pieces, we had already decided what we were going to do, and I thought that was finalized. We, we have a commitment that we, we made to the Boat Club that we're going to have a certain amount of parking spaces available for them, for their, for any events that occur there. And, and we also have the pickleball courts, the basketball court, and the tennis courts, all of which need parking. And I understand what you're saying in terms of green space, but I, but we, we have totally insufficient parking to allow people to go to the park and use the park. And this has been an ongoing concern and a comment that's been made to me at least 100 times in the past couple of months. People are always asking for more parking. And every time there's a major event of any kind at Gilchrist Park, we have totally insufficient parking. You know, I, I, further to what Debbie said, with regard to the Playground Parking, that, that lot is way too small, with all the people that use that Playground, and, and people who are going more to the center points of the, of the park, down by where the gazebo is. A lot of people park there and walk down, because that's the closest parking that currently exists. You know, all of these spaces, by the way, people are parking in them already. Some of them are already kind of unofficial parking lots. Some of them are kind of covered over by grass, where there may be paver bricks underneath them. But all, all of these spaces are right now being used as parking unofficially in some cases. And, you know, maybe we split up the lot in the middle, where there was a huge, long block of parking. But just remember that it's going to be less expensive. block of parking, but just remember that it's going to be less expensive to put down macadam in a straight line, in a long line, than it is to break it up into separate parking lots, number one. And number two, I'm sorry, I, you know, it's not just the children that we have to be concerned about, we're the second oldest demographic in the country, and we've got older people that want to use that park too, and they don't want to park on the street. So, you know, I look at it from that aspect as well. I still support option number one, which is what we voted on over a year ago to go forward. And, you know, I'm not sure why we have to keep revisiting this 100 more times. I, this just really bothers me.
Jahah?
I think maybe a good in-between is the option six. And again, saying that if one's coming to the park to do activities, then.
Can you put option six up there?
Then walking is not, I would think that walking's not going to be a problem, because that's why everyone's coming to the park, is that, to do activity. So, I mean, people having to walk a little bit, I think that's just part of the, being in a park, one walks a little bit.
Well, right now, they're parking over on Virginia at the east end of the park, to go to the east end of the park, because there's not enough parking down at that end.
No matter how much parking, parking we add on this end of the park, it's not going to help the east end.
No, I know that, I know that. But we do have an obligation to the boat club with our new lease with them, that we have to put some parking spaces back in there that we took away. So that's part of it.
John?
Okay, one of the solutions to Lynn's issue is with option six, you can actually make the green space a temporary parking lot by opening up on that, in that area there with just a gate. You keep a gate, you keep it locked most of the time, but if you've got issues with boat parking, you can open that up and put another 30, 40, 50 cars in there for those events. And that would solve, so there shouldn't be any question about boat club having enough place to, to park.
Well, I think if you add up the on-street parking and the existing Bayfront Center parking and then it, in, in option six, the, the parking that's in front of the Bayfront Center plus the Berry Street, that gets that 80, 90 parking spaces, kind of in a reasonable.
If you just add up the ones, the three on the street, the three first, and then the, the parking as in that.
Yes.
Option there, plus the green space, you've got a room for 150, 60 cars. That's.
I'm really not in favor of us encouraging any parking on the grass. We have done that in the east, the rest of the park, and I really would like to see us avoid all parking on the grass.
The other issue you brought up, actually, Nancy, was that the kids, there are some kids programs and they need green space. This park, temporary parking or informal parking in this green space here could serve those kids.
Oh, it would, that would definitely be grassy area, that's park grassy area, the kids could play in.
Yeah, and so doing, allowing parking in there, you know, five times a year is not going to cause any issues. And it's, it's cheap.
Yeah, but I think, I feel like that opens us up, if you let us park in this part of the park, then why don't you let us park in the other part of the park?
Well, the other part.
And we've been through this, we've been through that, those discussions many times over here on, on council, so I.
The other part of the park is, we're talking about the east end primarily, I mean, the way it's laid out now, it's really difficult to go in there and park anymore because you've got the swales around the edges and, and the parking. Not to say that at some point we shouldn't reevaluate what we did down there, but that's a different discussion. So I don't, I don't see that there's pressure, there would be pressure to, okay, you let us park down here in the grass, now you should let us park down there in the grass. I don't think that.
I think we need to be consistent.
I would be in favor of taking out the last two sections of diagonal parking on the west side of the park.
Taking out the.
And leaving it all parking inside the park?
Yeah.
So option one, without the street parking on the, on the.
So you would be.
Yeah, like, like option six, I would even, I mean, if you, if you just absolutely have to do option six, I'm, I'm really not so much in favor of it, but I would take out the, that end of the.
You're talking about D4 and 5?
Yeah.
I would even take out D1 if you want to save a little more money.
I think we could take out D1 also.
The issue becomes, on some of this, as I think Mitchell pointed out, that there are drainage problems that we're going to be solving by putting in, is that what you said?
Yes, as current, as, as currently designed, the drainage pattern is from the center line of Red Esplanade for sheet flow, so there's no drains or gutters or catch basins or anything, it's for sheet flow all the way across to the adjacent swales, which are shown on the plan, like this, or then into the parking area where there is structured drainage that drains the stormwater management areas there. So there's some rework there that would have to be done in terms of engineering design to remove those, which is why you don't get all the cost savings back, because you have to put in fill dirt instead of putting in sub basin pavers, so.
But $1,200 a parking space.
Correct.
So are there ways that we would be, if we were to remove some sections of the diagonal parking, that we would be able to discourage people from driving over the sidewalk onto the park?
Certainly in some locations, there are the, the stormwater swales.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see that on there.
Yeah, so, so that may be a way, the strategic location of those stormwater swales, they, they would prohibit people from parking or driving across into the park. But right now, the primary, you know, roadblock, as it were, in, in the plan is the wheel stops. Because you could still get vehicular intrusion into the actual sidewalk in that scenario, because the stormwater swales would need to be on the other side of the sidewalk for access, so.
Just sort of as a guesstimate, what's the cost of removing all the queen palms along there to do this?
All the, the royal palms?
The royal palms, yeah, I'm sorry, royal.
You, you're talking about removing the existing?
Yeah, because you, wouldn't you have to, to do this?
Yeah, that's rolled up in the demolition costs, the demolition costs and the engineering estimate is a line item for everything, so I, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I was asked, because there are some people who feel very protective towards those trees and they're very upset, so I just was asked.
The, the plan, just like on, on the harbor walk, the planting that we've done there, we're not going to be planting royal palms replacements this big, we're going to be planting substantial royal palms that are healthy. So the loss will be temporary in, in those regards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as we are staring at this, is there a way that we can move the conversation along, let's talk about the, let's talk about the on-street parking. Let's break it down.
Could I add something to that for one street parking?
Sure.
Like you just said. If you talk about, and I'll have to point again, but.
We, we know you want to use that pointer, so go for it.
I mean, I have it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're talking about over here, those two that you first referenced.
I did.
Or to whoever did. So that's 10 spaces in seven, so you're looking at a 17 space reduction. So if you have in D6, for example, you have 46 spaces, you're down to 30. Now, net increase of spaces. If you, in addition to that, took out D1, you're down another 10 spaces, so now you're down to 20 spaces. So you're essentially, option three reworked, because instead of having the smaller lot in option three and all of the on-street parking, you're having a bigger lot and less on-street parking. So that's essentially where you are as far as numbers.
Which is basically my philosophy.
Remember, you have seven, 10, 10, 25, 10.
Okay, but I question that, because the cost of the on-street parking is higher than the cost of other parking, so.
No, I wasn't talking costs. Yeah, I wasn't talking costs.
I understand.
Talking spaces.
Yeah.
But we got to some point start talking cost, it seems like we.
When you get to cost, the on-street, when you saw the reduction of the 37 spaces, there was almost 360, so just say $370,000 that she saves, that's about 10,000 a spot.
So this is option two, option two reduces all of the on-street parking to just in, from the children's playground over to just east of the pickleball courts.
Yeah, that's really.
So it does provide some parking for the pickleball courts, and it's also some overflow parking for the children's playground, albeit on the street.
And then also, if you go to the green space on option six, you save some money in that area.
Yes.
In building that area.
Do you have a headache yet, Mitchell?
No, this is extremely exciting for me, this is.
That's awesome.
A sick man.
There's medicine you can take for that.
I'll have to ask my doctor.
There's a good line for you, Dan. There's medicine you can take for that, right?
They have put a lot of work into this urban design.
Oh, they have, and I really.
I'm sure I was giving Mitchell and Julie headaches all week, so.
I really appreciate all the, all of the level of detail that staff has gone to, to provide, all these, these different versions that give, because I, feedback I've received from residents is they really like the on-street parking.
And I've heard quite the contrary.
Me too.
So, yeah.
And the comments we got this morning from residents close by, they were more in favor of the on-street parking and less parking in the.
Well, I, I think.
Except not Patty Allen.
Except Patty Allen, I know. She doesn't really live there.
The benefit of the options you have here is to do just what you're doing, to give you a visual representation of all the possibilities and be able to interpolate between them so you can really come down to the bottom line of what you want to see as far as the number of spaces and where, and then ultimately cost, as the council member said.
What about option two, an add back in D1, which is going to give you more parking toward the middle of the park on the street?
What's, oh.
Yeah, that, that area that I'm circling, that, that would be D1, adding that back in.
It's 10 spaces.
Yes.
Right, right now, we have very little parking in the middle section of the park, anywhere on the street or in the parking, inside parking. So I'm just wondering if it would make more sense to put that back into that plan. I, I, I completely support the one solid parking lot at the west end of the park, of the, of the park, inside the park. I think that makes the most sense from a cost standpoint and from having to not re-engineer all of that stuff. Since we've already paid to have it engineered, I would hate for us to have to go back through that again.
It's not going to cost that much. I, I'm not in favor of us completely making the west end of the park a parking lot. We need some area that, near the Bayfront Center for the children to come and play. So I would be, I would, could agree with you on, on the, on D1, adding D1 back in, but keeping some green area between the children's parking lot and.
Yeah, well, that would be the option six part of that.
Option six.
Yeah, plus then putting back in D1.
Well, if we go to option six, what we're doing is eliminating D345.
If you go to option six, you're eliminating 10, 10, and 7 spaces.
Well, I'm just talking about the green space now, and leave option two, but add the green space. It should save you more money, too.
To do what?
To do option two, add the green space instead of a parking lot, and then.
I'm not considering that to be green space for parking.
Yeah, I'm just saying green space at this point.
Oh, okay, okay.
In place of, in place of a parking lot, that's what he meant by.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
The paved parking lot.
Got it.
Sounds good. And then if we were into saving a little more money, then maybe the D5, 4, and 5 might come out. So you're.
I think what I heard you all saying, that you would, you were in favor of taking out D3, 4, and 5. Is that what I heard you say, for the on-street parking?
You just said 4 and 5.
I just said 4 and 5 now, but.
Oh, okay.
If, if we feel that the children's parking lot is a little small, then you've got seven or 10 more spaces there.
Very small.
Okay, so then leave D, so then take out 4 and 5, but leave 1, 2, and 3 in?
Yeah.
D1, 2, and 3? Is that, I see.
I would consider that a compromise.
Okay, so leave, so we're going to leave 1, 2, and 3 in. And then as far as parking on, which version of the, is it 6? Or is it?
What are you talking about now? The green space is in parking lot 2.
3, 3 and 4 don't make any sense at all.
Yeah, 3 and, 3 and 4, actually, the Bayfront, existing Bayfront Center is completely disconnected from the Berry Street. And so, it's like, well, if you're going to put a driveway through between the Bayfront Center and the Berry Street, why don't you just put in parking there? So it really gives more of what I think John Byrne was speaking to us about, and it puts more parking over closer to the boat club, and then it, the green space is, yeah, it's a little bit further away from the Bayfront Center, but the little kids can walk across the parking lot to get to that, they don't have to go.
By the way, Mitchell, I'd be really impressed if all your financial numbers changed as you made this.
I would be too.
So, so.
So this is what I think I've been hearing you describe, is option six with eliminating the on-street, the diagonal parking from the, the three westernmost portions.
Well.
You went back.
Only the two westernmost.
Only the two westernmost.
So put 5, put 5 back in, I guess, right?
Put 3, put that one back in.
Oh, my good God.
Keep that one.
There we go.
Yeah. That was my compromise.
There you go.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, yeah.
Okay, so this is the, is this the compromise you were talking about, Debbie?
That's what, yeah, I would be.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
So.
Would be 46 spaces minus the 17 on the end, so you're 29 new spaces.
Yes.
But it's more convenient for the people going to events at the boat club and the Bayfront Center, and those, you know, if, if there is a need for overflow parking for the playground, there is off-street parking on both sides of it, which, you know, even if they drove into the parking lot to drop the children off and then went into park, I would still feel safer. I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, this is good. This is good.
So, D, we're looking at option six with all the on-street parking, is that?
No.
I'm really confused.
It's minus the two ends.
On the left-hand side, the two end ones.
They're red boxes right now.
Right there.
Right there.
So those parking, on-street parking areas go away, that reduces your parking count by 17, and.
What have we gained?
Reduces the, it reduces the cost.
The cost, I would estimate to be $350,000, $330,000 to be.
We've gained additional parking.
Yeah, what, what is our total additional over what we have right now with this configuration?
Total additional parking?
Yeah.
It would be an additional 29.
Yep, 29 spaces.
Total.
Really not going to help us.
Even with the great big parking lot all around Bayfront.
Because they're already there, part of it's already there.
So we haven't really gained anything, that's my concern.
And the grass portion is already counted as parking, even though it's not formal yet, because people do park on that.
Okay.
And it has the wheel, or the wheel.
So we're spending $2 million for 29 parking places.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
No, it's going to, it's going to reduce.
There's a lot more going on there, too, that's what we talked about, the 800,000 being other things.
It's going, those numbers, the funding numbers are going to change.
Yes.
I think this is a good compromise.
What is, what's the total, Greg, what's the total of off-street parking with this new configuration? It looks like a lot more than 29 just that.
Now, the, well, there is, the off-street parking. Now, the, well, there is, the off-street parking with that, if you're looking at D1, 2, and 3, you would have 25, 10, and 10. So that's 45. But when you get into the formal parking lots, you actually lose some spaces overall. That's where you have a net reduction of spaces. So net, you only have 29.
But you're taking away from places where people are parking that's not right now designated parking. Right, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we are. We are, people are parking in the grass.
Yeah.
And we're taking that away.
Okay.
But we are, the children's lot is going to be expanded somewhat, the whole area in front of the Bayfront Center is going to be parking.
Okay.
And then there'll be the on-street parking between, in front of that grassy area as well as over in areas designated 1, 2, and 3, that's up on the screen, down at the bottom. So it's only the on-street parking on D4 and D5 that won't be done?
You have 45 additional spaces in D1, 2, and 3, the largest of that is D2 that has 25, 10 on each side of it, so that's 45. And then, of course, you have the remainder of the net overall decrease in the parking areas that are formal and informal.
I think it's important to note.
About 16 spaces.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that of the 126 parking space current count, you have approximately 48 of those spaces are on the grass today. So it's 29 brand-new spaces and 48 formal parking spaces that you're adding to the park, because currently those 48 spaces that we count are just grass.
Yes.
Wow.
Yep.
I'm totally confused.
Well, what he's saying is that when you're looking at new spaces, you've added the 29, but then if you add back in the ones that are grass spaces to the very left, for the example on the top, you add those back in, the total number of paved spaces you would have, you're actually more than 29, but the new ones you're adding are the 29, because the informal spaces are already counted in there, and they're just going to be paved.
Is this going to fix our parking problem?
No.
Are we still going to get harassed about parking?
It's going to make parking spaces real for, right now, people informally parking, this is going to make, give them actual spaces.
And it'll put it where they need it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I still would argue or propose that that green space could be a temporary parking place at certain moments.
There's a horse.
Well, we've always reserved the fact, reserved that it is always possible to allow parking in the park, but we've always said no. And we've talked about this many, many times, John, maybe before you got on council.
It's my opinion.
But it's just painfully so for some of us. So. Okay. So are we, is there agreement on this?
I don't know where we are, to be honest with you. I, we've looked at so many different pictures, I'm not sure what we're talking about anymore.
The one you have right in front of you is the one.
Yeah, Mitchell was doing this on the fly.
It says option 6 at the top, but he's changed the picture on option 6 to reflect the left 2 on-street parking areas eliminated.
Can you tell me how many parking spaces are in the actual P3 that are?
Off the top of my head, unfortunately, I can't.
Okay. It seems like I'm trying to do some kind of a, well, wait a minute.
Gilchrist's parking lot has 25 right now. The proposed is 22, so.
I think.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
That's 58.
I think it's 27 parking spaces that you would get in front.
The 58 is everything in front, the formal.
So to make this hopefully a little bit easier, what staff is getting from this kind of discussion is that in some way, we need to modify the design. We know first off that we need to go back to the engineer and get construction plans out of the engineering set that we have currently for the Phase B. We could bring back essentially, because this is under a master services agreement, and we're going to have to issue a task order to get a revision, we could actually come back, once we've gone through that task order with, A, a conceptual design fully fleshed out that we think what we've heard as a sort of general consensus, I guess, although there's still some discussion points there, and also the engineer's projected cost for doing the redesign work. And that way, we know what we're talking about, at least from the design cost perspective, if not from the construction cost perspective. So that's another option to put on the table. So then you could have a look at this again, where we're not looking at six or seven different options, we're looking at basically one. And then maybe that will spark, that's good enough, or, yeah, we need more changes to that.
I'm comfortable with this.
I'm comfortable with this.
I think it gives us, through our discussion, it gives us a compromise on what we've been looking for. Yeah, there's going to be a little bit of engineering, but it's not going to be substantial. I wouldn't think it would be substantial, because we're just eliminating a couple pieces or. So. I think we can come back, well.
Are we going to have to come back anyway? Or are we?
Well, ultimately, yes, to approve a contract.
Ultimately, yes.
But this, I mean, this seems to be as close a compromise as we're able to get.
If this is what we decide we want, then, then we can, if you want staff to come back with the official, I mean, I think we have an idea of the count, Greg has been giving us a count. So. If we're comfortable with this.
I think this is a good compromise, because we have green space in front of the parking lots, even though it's just a buffer. We have parking in front of the green space, and then we have parking lot by the playground, and then we go back to parking in the streets in front of green space again. So I, you know, I think it's, it doesn't look like we're just paving the park, and I think that's, that, I mean, you know, none of us are park designers, but that is something that I think we had to be really cognizant of, was, we didn't want it to look like we were just putting in a huge parking lot.
And we're also putting more parking over toward the boat club where the.
Yes.
But I think it's a compromise.
I think it's good.
So do you want a motion? Greg?
Mitchell?
I think we'd like, there's nothing wrong with a motion.
Yes.
To go with the option as shown here, if that's the one you're going to choose.
I'll make a motion for the option shown here.
Well, let's.
I'll second that.
If you can verbalize that for the, for the minutes.
I'll make an option for, for the modified option 6, as shown on the screen right now.
Which we can call option 6A.
Option 6A.
Option 6A. Motion to approve option 6A.
And the only difference is the 2 parking lots on the street.
The 2, 10, and 7?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's the difference between 6 and 6A.
Yeah.
Yes.
Difference, yes, difference between 6 and 6A, are those taking those 2 on-street parking?
D4 and D5.
Taking D4 and D5 out, yes.
I second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve option 6A, which removes option, D4 and D5?
Are we, are we making this motion to send it back to staff, or, yeah, this isn't to accept it as the final project?
Accepting this as what we are picking.
Right.
Why are we removing D4 and D5? I, I mean, I'm not even clear, I'm just, I'm not even clear why we're doing that. We're taking away 17 more.
We have a motion, and, and we have a second, we can discuss it.
Well, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. So Lynn is now asking, why are we removing, and so.
We're taking 17.
I'm actually in favor of keeping D4 and D5, but, you know, if somebody was concerned about.
My concern, and it's unfortunately not a big enough concern, is that we're spending a lot of money here, and this saves a little, about $200,000.
But we're not gaining anything. I mean, how many spaces are we gaining by doing, by taking D4 and D5 out?
Yeah, we're losing 17 spaces.
Right.
Yeah.
So that puts 17 spaces closer to the boat club. So then if we, if we put.
I'm just trying to conserve some costs here. I'd like to conserve more.
There is money in the 1% sales tax fund that we haven't used yet that can be used for this, that would make the most sense to do that. I don't see why we're taking those sections of parking out when we desperately need them.
Again, we have to be respectful of the neighborhood and cost. It's like, I mean, if we're just going to be spending, spending, we have issues, major issues, like drainage in the area.
I'm not talking about worrying, I am worried about spending money as much as anybody else on this dais, but I just don't even understand why we're taking those out at this point. We took away a whole bunch of other stuff that we originally voted to accept a year ago, by the way, and now we're, now we're taking another 17 spaces away from the new design. I don't even understand it. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. How many spaces are we gaining, Mitchell, if we take D4 and D5 out? How many net gain are we going to have at the end of this?
29.
$2 million for 29 parking spaces.
Plus all the spaces that are being formalized.
The point is, we're not gaining that much for what we're going to spend on it.
We're preserving our park, and we're gaining parking spaces.
Respectfully, I disagree. There's no point in having a park if people can't get to it.
Now, Debbie, you felt that removing D4 and D5 was a compromise.
You know, I don't like any of it. I'm just, I was trying to maximize, minimize the off-street parking by, I think that's an area that gets very congested, and I just think of all the places along there, that's going to be the least safe. But, you know, if it's that big a deal, I just offered it as a compromise. And I think it's really expensive per parking. I would rather see us put a parking lot, extend the children's parking lot, 17 spaces, than 7, you know, the cost of those. It's just, to me, that is a ridiculous amount of money to pay for a parking place.
I don't disagree with that either.
Huh?
I don't disagree with that either.
I don't disagree with the notion, but we can't park, pave over the whole park.
No, I know that, that was why I thought it was my compromise, but you can put them back in. I.
Just, just to comment here, Lynn, the only difference between option 6A and option 1, which is, I think you're most comfortable with, is that green space and those, and 5, and 4 and 5, correct? Yeah, just so we know that that's what we're talking about.
I got that part.
There's also D1, right, or, or P1. Isn't there another one?
So we added D1 back in.
We put D1 back in, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we will be here all day.
Yeah, that's okay.
Talking about this, so we just, we have a motion and we have a second. We can vote on this motion, and if the motion passes, then the motion passes. If the motion doesn't pass, then we can go back and. So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we will go with option 6A. So then we will proceed with however it is we, the next step. Okay. Thank you for the discussion. Cooper Street Multi-Use Recreational Trail Design and Construction.
Apologize again for the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. I lost my papers. So the Cooper Street Multi-Use Recreational Trail Design was awarded in October of 2019. In the process of the discussions for the 1% sales tax extension, City Council reallocated $991,000 to Tier 2 for construction of this project. At that time, City Council was informed that the estimated construction costs for this project were approximately $3 million. City staff is seeking direction on whether or not to move forward with completing the design process. Our concern here is that it may take several years before the funding picture becomes clearer for this project. So the time lag between design and construction could lead to redesign costs, as we've seen in the previous project. So right now, to date, we're at 30% design plans with this project. The contractor has been put on a temporary hold by staff pending some resolution as to whether or not we want to proceed with the contract or our hold off on it, or essentially put it on pause, or temporarily, permanently, semi-permanently halted. So to date, we've expended approximately $61,000 on this, and we have remaining $135,000, and that's just for design, allocated for design. So this is seeking direction.
I just think I saw John's hand go up first, and then Debbie up.
That's all right. If we stop right now, there are no penalties. I mean, the money's in the bank, and we don't have to, what's ever been done is still probably okay to use in the future.
So we've, we've, the contractor on this project is on a master services agreement, so if we're still under that master services agreement at some point in the future, within the next, I believe we still have four years left on that, we could restart the project with them. The only potential loss is if we're not in that master services agreement, then we will probably have to go back out to bid, and then we will have lost that 30%. However, I think there's, we didn't put it in the agenda item because it's just been a verbal conversation, but within the last couple of weeks, FDOT, our FDOT liaison has called inquiring about this project, seeking more information. FDOT may have an interest in helping us with funding at some point in the future. It's on our project priority list, it's been on that list for a very long time, it's received no interest to this point, this is the first time we've heard anything about it, so it didn't make the cut, because there's not enough information in there at present, but, you know, that, that's on the table. Hopefully, we can explore that more fully at some point in the future, but as of right now, there's no funding for this project, essentially, for construction.
Debbie?
Well, the Sales Tax Committee felt that we had much more pressing things that we needed to spend our money on than this, which is why it got allocated to Tier 2. So I would guess that maybe we stop right now and add that to our funding for the parking. Or if I can't say that, then do we, just that we stop?
Are you making a motion?
I am.
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to stop the funding then, just, and leave it there?
Leave it there.
To stop the funding. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's nice to have a quick item. Need a break? Okay. Then take five. We, we will reconvene at one o'clock.
Someone was asking when I talked to them, they said about the noise ordinance, and they said, well, will that discussion include whatever it was? And I said, what you just said, I don't know.
Okay, John, as soon as you get back, we're ready. The City Council is back in session, and we have a residential noise regulation. So, I'm not sure who's going to introduce this item. Is that you, Smitty? Are you introducing the noise regulation topic?
Well, I wanted to see what Councilwoman Carey has to say on the issue. If you could speak into your mic so I can hear you.
Yeah, that's true. Debbie, you are the one, I think, that asked to have this put on the agenda? Is that correct? So if you would like to then take it from here and introduce it.
Basically, I received a number of complaints over the last six months about this.
I can't hear you.
Well, I think my mic's on.
Mine, mine is, but the rest of them, can you turn them? Mic's on?
No, it's on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Over the last six months, I have received some verbal questions about this, and then I got a couple in writing recently. And then last Sunday morning at five till seven, three city contract mowers showed up at the four lots next to my house all at once and started mowing. And I would just like to have a conversation. You know, we're, we're not allowed to discuss it amongst ourselves, so I'm bringing it to council for a discussion to see if there's some way we can fix the problems that we're having with the noise ordinance. Now, I understand, I know what the rules are, I can read the ordinances. My question is, if we call you on Monday and tell you that on Sunday something happened, you say to us, we can't do anything about it because we didn't see it. And so what I would like from code is, how do we fix this? What do we do to let you know that they're driving in our, our lawns, they're leaving their beep up, backup beepers on for 20 minutes? How do we get this stopped?
And may I interject? This, this agenda item topic is only about the noise that is from, in the neighborhoods, from the lawn mowing and in the construction. It is not anything to do with downtown music noise.
Right.
Even though there was somebody who opined with that, I was asked by our city attorney to please make sure to clarify, so.
Because I, I had not, I've not received any complaints about that, so I didn't know until 8:20 this morning that that was even a problem. But this has been a recurring problem, and it's, it seems like the worst offenders recently have been the city contract mowers, but it does happen with others. You know, now, my husband still works, so he has to be able to mow on Saturday and/or Sunday, depending on the weather. So I'm not asking to have an outlaw, I'm just asking, what do we do when you guys aren't there to get it fixed?
Well, myself, growing up in my adolescent years, I used to work a farm at my grandmother's house. We were up at the crack of dawn, you know, weekends, over the summer, doing whatever was required. You know, the ladies and gentlemen that work out in the field, these are the contractors that service the citizens of this community. They're out there at the crack of dawn, doing what's got to be done, whether it be building a new home, whether it going into someone's home to replace an air conditioning unit, a water heater, whatever the case may be. They're doing basically what everybody's trying to do. We live in Florida, they're trying to beat the heat. You know, most, most of the contractors out there, they want to get out there early so that they can get done early. You know, they don't want to be out there till five, six, seven o'clock at night, still working, trying to get the day's work done. And what it comes down to is, you know, noise has been discussed by city councils for many years. After Charlie is when the ordinance went into effect. I believe in 2005 is when it was written into the ordinance. You know, since then, there's been issues with noise at the park, over at Lashley Park. We had complaints from the condo association, music, the bars downtown. It's been discussed, airport traffic coming in overhead, pickleball over at Gilcrest's, pool pumps, air conditioning. We've got all kinds of noise out there. Okay? Well, yet the people that are doing most of the services for the citizens, if we were to alter the times of operation, I believe it would be detrimental to most of the people in the city, and you'd be satisfying the few. Because what it comes down to, the contractors, if they can't start early in Punta Gorda, they're going to start working on jobs that are outside of Punta Gorda. Punta Gorda is going to take a backseat to everybody else. Prices are going to be higher because of the restricted times. So, I mean, in case of emergencies, like you say, hot water heaters go, air conditioning craps out, people want somebody there now. They don't care what time it is. They're hot, they're sweating, they have no hot water, can't get a shower, they want somebody out on site regardless of what time it is. So, in, in all honesty, I don't have an answer for you how to deal with this. I mean, you have construction, you have lot maintenance, there's going to be noise, no matter what you do. Yes?
Yes. Are our current, is our current ordinance appropriate in terms of the hours that people, the contractors can work and should work? And, and then secondly, are they following that?
If I might, let me remind everyone what we're talking about regarding contractors. Our ordinance prohibits construction between the hours of 8:00 PM.
Right.
And 6:00 AM. So anything that's going on before 6:00 AM is in violation of the ordinance.
Right.
Anything after 6:00 AM is permissible. As far as the, the lot, the lot mowing is concerned, it's prohibited after 7:00 PM and before 7:00 AM. I think, I think Councilmember Carey's question was, want to enforcement, not necessarily the reasonableness of our code, and I, and I don't know that right now, the reasonableness of our code is being request, is being put in question, it's the enforcement.
I think that's what I heard.
That's correct.
I heard, I heard the reasonableness of our code, and I heard two, I heard two things. I heard reasonableness of our code, and I also heard some construction activity that causes damage in the neighborhoods. Like, I know I had a situation where a long flatbed truck was trying to get around our cul-de-sac, drove into my lawn, caused ruts, drove over the cul-de-sac, broke the water, the water systems in the cul-de-sac, water started shooting up. It was a Friday late afternoon, I had to call Howard to get the, the water department out, the utilities out to, to shut off the water. The neighbors were all running over to me because it was a big fountain. Fortunately, I knew what truck it was because I saw it, and it was from a house being built down the street. I called, gave the address to McHale, the name of the company to McHale, and the city went to the company and the company paid for the damages. And they, they fixed my lawn. But that kind of stuff happens, it's like, and, you know, is, is on the weekend, the reasonableness of our code for like lawn mowing, is it likely that the, that the contractors are going to be building on the weekend? Probably not. You know, most of the houses I've seen under construction in my neighborhood, it's sporadic when they're there, and they're usually not there on the weekend. But is it something where we want to consider making it like six o'clock? For lawn mowing, six o'clock on Saturday to eight o'clock on Sunday? Just so there's one day of the week where there's a little bit of something?
Could I interject?
So that's, they're two different things, so.
There's two different things, and we have two questions first. One was, is six o'clock appropriate for contractors in the morning, which was one question? But back to Councilperson's previous question, if someone comes in at five o'clock in the morning and starts mowing the grass, to be extreme, who do you call? Or if there is someone driving and right now they're putting rucks in your yard and you have to report it because they need to see it, who do you call? And that's if it's outside the hours, or not if they're complying with the ordinance, but if something's happening outside of that ordinance, who do you call? That would be the one question. And second then, are the hours appropriate? And then, as you said, the other issue.
And, no offense, but based on what you just said to me, I don't think I want you to be the one picking up the phone when this happens, because you, you just, you just paved the way for the contractors to break all the laws because the poor guys need to work to beat the heat, and, you know, we did this on the farm, and I'm sorry, but we don't live on a farm here. Many of us are, are retirees who, you know, moved here not to be assaulted. I mean, when they were building the house next door to me, they started roofing at 6:00 AM, which is part of the code, and I knew it was. But it's not just the work, the roofing that they're doing, it's their loud boom boxes, it's their screaming at each other over the noise of the roofing. It's all of these things that go into making life miserable for you for a week or two while you live in your house. And one morning, they started at quarter after five. There was nobody to call. That's what I'm asking you.
Okay.
I'm not saying that I want you to be super cop and, you know, make them sleep in until 10:00. I'm saying when they do break the ordinances, and they do, what do we do about it?
When it's after hours, I mean, I know my boss, Mr. Cole, basically, he can be contacted 24/7 at any time. He lives close. Okay? Nobody likes to come in after hours, but if it's necessary, i- it can be done. Okay? But basically, people, if something's going on and it's after hours, they need to call PD, especially if it's a violation of city ordinance. I mean, this is a growing community. We have a lot of new homes going up, it's been a busy year regardless of the pandemic. If anything, the construction in my mind has increased with the pandemic and the economy and the interest rates being so low. Punta Gorda is advertised as one of the best small cities in the country to retire. You know, you have a draw and people are coming here, yes. Do they want to live here? Sure they do. It's a beautiful place, who wouldn't want to live here? Okay? So with growth, you're going to have some inconvenience. You know, unfortunately, the people that have been here a while have settled in, okay? And they like things nice and quiet, and I can't blame them, I would too. But when you have a vacant lot next to you, you know that sooner or later, somebody is going to build a house on that lot. My suggestion to the people, honestly, if you don't want that house built next to you, buy the lot. You know, prevent the problem from happening in the first place. But like I say, you know, with growth, there's going to be problems, there's going to be noise.
And I think everyone understands that part, that's not, I think what we wanted to discuss is more what happens when there is a violation of the noise ordinance, which could indeed include offensive noise outside the parameters of your property, which I don't know exactly how that's defined, that's probably a David terminology thing. But if indeed there's a violation of the ordinance, and it was a good point for PD, which we happen to have here, that could maybe address that.
Yeah. So, good morning, Jase, just came with the police department, I've been listening to the conversation. So, the reality is, after hours, we do occasionally get phone calls for code violations like construction. Our officers are familiar with a 6:00 AM start time for construction, a 7:00 AM start times for your general. the 7:00 AM start times for your general maintenance. We occasionally do get those. We don't get a lot of phone calls, but we are very capable of coming out and dealing with those issues when they come up. We are generally going to just get voluntary compliance. That's obviously what we do here in the city oftentimes, is ask for voluntary compliance. If we have a chronic homeowner condition or a construction site condition that somebody's consistently not doing that, then we can always take enforcement actions. Some of those enforcement actions may be turning it over to code. We can write a report, we can start an investigation, we can open things from that manner. So, there's definitely things that can be done. We certainly do respond to these types of events after hours. It's not obviously our primary mission that we deal with, but it's, it is something that we do get occasional calls from. And we do, do respond appropriately.
So, there is someone to respond 24/7 if needed?
Correct.
And ideally, if we have a code issue, we could get ahold of code. And there are some that I could get ahold of. I guess like you said, Mr. Cole might be able to be contacted if, if needed. But PD could certainly be on the scene much more quickly.
I think we all need his cell phone number.
I think it's unlisted.
Yeah, right. To address part of the problem, I know that in the past couple of years, we had a lot of problems with the lot mowers not keeping up with the, the level of the grass. So, we ramped up our service for the lot mowing program. But could we request in our contract with them for them not to mow on Sunday? That might solve part of the problem.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official for the record. Good afternoon. Sorry.
It's morning somewhere.
Somewhere. Right now, as, as you all know, the code does allow for that. We're doing two mows a month. We started two mows a month in June to keep up with it. We could definitely put it in our contract not to mow on Sundays. But keep in mind, that could potentially come back as an issue if Sunday's the only dry day. When we have a lot of rain six days a week, and it's just drying out on Sunday, and we're trying to keep up with our, with our two mows a month. I mean, it is always a possibility. It is an option of, at council if you would like to do that. But we, so far, so good on, on, you know, the complaints that have come in this year. We've, and, and we're doing two mows a month in October as well. What may have happened in the end of September, we, we did ask them to get everything done before the end of the fiscal year. So, maybe they did, were mowing on the weekend or on Sunday toward the end of the month. That could be a possibility of what happened on that Sunday. But it, it's definitely, it's definitely something that, if that's what, at the direction of council, if that's what we want to look into, we can add it to the contract.
Well, I mean, that, that seems to be a lot of the complaints that I've heard in the last couple of weeks is, you know, with regard to this whole item, agenda item that we're talking about right now. I just wonder if that, if that would make a little bit of a difference. It would, at least indicate we're listening, you know? I mean, they're doing, they're doing-
Or not as early on Sunday.
Well, yeah. But people are also asking, what I've also heard from people is that they would like a day of peace and quiet as much as possible. I know that's not possible with people who work full-time. Because those, those folks, just like you were saying earlier, they, they mow their lawn on Saturday and Sunday. But if, if we could at least have our city lot mowers lead by example, that might be something we could start with. Just a thought. They're doing a much better job, by the way. This year has not been anywhere near as bad as the past two years. So, I'm very happy about that.
And just to add to what they've been discussing, we want to make sure of a couple of things. If we restrict them in some regard, of course, we're going to probably be looking at an increasing cost. And if we restrict it down to no Sunday mowing, we might even be looking at a premium to get people to mow at another time if Sunday's the only dry day. We don't want complaints for the condition of the lots to start coming in heavily if indeed we have a rainy season. So, we just have to be cognizant of all that.
Yeah.
And, you know, once you go through all those iterations, then we can do what's necessary for whatever you decide. The other part, of course, is whether it's construction or mowing or whatever the case, the way the ordinance is currently written, if you want to restrict that, there was some question about whether or not you would restrict it for things like July 4th. If everyone's out having picnics in their backyard, do you want mowers that are out working on July 4th? That kind of thing. So, that would be part and parcel to the discussion of if you're restricting it to what level.
One other thing I do want to add, with the hours being from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM for working, I don't know of any contractors that are starting at 6:00 AM. I don't know of any contractors that are working until 8:00 PM. Okay? Maybe adjust the hours from, say, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM and eliminate Sundays working. You know, because I know over the last few months, I've only had one call regarding a noise complaint. And that was because the guys were there at 6 o'clock in the morning. They were staging. They didn't actually start working until 7:00, once it was light. But again, 7 o'clock on a Sunday morning? I'd be a little miffed myself. So, just a thought.
So, what's your?
One thing I would say, we, again, we're unique in that we have so much of our city that's still buildable. And I think that we can't use some of these other cities' policies as models because they're not in the same situation. They're not having, you know, this, this record permits. Nor are they doing a lot of building within their city. These other cities we mentioned, all, their building is mostly outside by the interstate. So, it's, it's, I think, I think we have to just tread carefully with this. I think if anything, we need to let people know what the enforcement situation is, what they need to do if there's a violation. But I, I would caution against making any changes. I think it would impact our community negatively.
I agree with that.
One other thing to consider, and this is going to happen one way or the other. Remember, we have three large assisted living facilities that are in the pipeline right now. We've got one on Aquiesta, one on Tamiami Trail down there in front of Seminole Lakes, and we've got one that's going to be going out down on Burnstour Road. Now, when they get to the concrete stages of those projects, more than likely, those, the pouring of the concrete for those projects are going to be probably 50-plus yards. They're going to want to start 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, get that concrete down, and get it finished before the heat of the day. That's quite normal in a project like that. They normally call us directly to get approval before doing so. Approval is normally granted, given the situation. But I'm sure we'll still get complaints when that is going on.
So, what would you, what's your preference on any kind of, making a recommendation? We're not changing any ordinances right now, but we can give indication to staff on what you would-
I think we should maybe contact our city lot mowers and ask them if they would please try not to mow on Sundays. I think rather than giving them a directive or changing the contract regulation, that maybe we ask for voluntary compliance with that just to help us a little bit? Because that seems to be a lot of the complaints that have been generated for the past few weeks. So, if that were to be a starting point, at least, we can at least give the residents an option of what they can do for other incidents that may occur.
Try not, or if you have to, then as late on Sunday as you can so that it's-
And, and, you know, I also think that we should contact some of these builders that are building homes and, and let them know some of the things that have been complained about. And such, you know, one of the things about causing ruts in people's grass, that's unacceptable. And we should at least ask the builders to, to share with their subcontractors that they should be cognizant of the fact that there are people living here who paid a lot of money for their homes and their yards, and we'd like to ask them to be a little bit more respectful.
Well, in the case of, of my situation, all they would have had to do is back up into the cul-de-sac. There's, it was a corner lot. All they would have had to do is back into the, the other street and then drive out, but they didn't.
Path of least we distance. That's what they do.
Yeah. Well, yeah. And it turned out to be a-
Yeah.
They were very, and the contractor came to my front door. They were very apologetic. So, you know, I don't have any complaints about that. I think it's the, the contractor themselves wouldn't want it. It was the driver and the people doing the, the work, so.
And I think the builders want people to respect the fact that they're there developing property on the behalf of the residents that are moving here. So, I think if we, if we ask for voluntary help with this, with our builders, that might be a starting point. Maybe they can at least share with some of their subcontractors that, you know, people have been concerned about the noise and so on and so on. And maybe we start there.
May I ask, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, try not to mow on Sunday. If they were to have to mow on Sunday, start as late as possible?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that okay to ask?
Yeah.
Okay. Like after 8:00 AM or do we want to do, or just after 9:00 AM? When we say as late as possible, what kind of guideline would you like me to give them?
I mean, they're going to do it before it gets too hot.
Yeah. I think 8:00 is probably more reasonable than, than 6:00 or 7:00.
You can say 8:00 or 9:00. It's just, you know, something that's delaying it a little bit.
Okay.
Not a contractual change.
Yeah, it's not, it's not anything we're going to write into the contract. But just to ask them because to explain that we've had some resident complaints and, you know, we'd like to give them some peace and quiet on the, on the weekends and-
I also understand your issue of it may be the only dry day, so they're-
Yeah.
Because I know, yeah. It's a good point around here.
There are people who do their own lawns, believe it or not, who, you know, have to do it on the only dry day, which might be Sunday. My issue was they unloaded the truck with all three mowers in my front yard, and then they, all three were mowing at the same time. So, my windows were shaking, you know? That's a rude awakening.
Yes.
So.
Absolutely. Okay. I just will let them-
Thank you very much for helping us understand. And it's good to know that they can at least call the police if code compliance is closed for the day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, have we beat this one up? Do we need to talk more about this?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My questions are answered.
Enough to, as far as how can we work with the contractors to request that they try to avoid the cul-de-sacs and driving over the lawns and?
We can do that. I mean, it's, it's a start. I mean, we, we can discuss it with them. I mean, we could have a contractor meeting and, you know, bring all the locals in that are doing most of the work and talk to them. But like I say, as long as they're abiding by the ordinance, I mean, most of the contractors, like you talked about, if they run over sprinkler heads or something like that of an adjoining neighbor, most of them are pretty good about it. They take care of it right away so that there's no problem.
But this is the contractor. This is, and it's the, it's the, the truck that's delivering materials that I think may be the one that's causing this. So, it's the driver of the truck that may have been delivering. It's these long flatbed trucks that deliver the, the pavers and the, the roof tiles and, and all that. And they, that's who's, they're driving over the, the lawns. I think from the-
Well, and again, anything that they damaged or is damaged by the contractor, contractor during the time of construction, before final inspection, they have to repair all that. Otherwise, they don't get the CO for their house.
Yeah, but this is down the street. I'm talking about, like, let's say, for example, I had not noticed that this truck was, and all of a sudden, in my situation where on a Friday afternoon, the water gets broken and, and the ruts are in the yard, and I didn't know who caused it. You know, had I not known earlier in the day and saw that truck because I had been out, and I came home and I saw that that truck was there, and I would have, you know, I knew who it was. But had I not, then how do we know? You know, that's-
And, and sometimes you don't know. I mean, deliveries come. There's not always somebody from the, from the business that's building the home on site. When the deliveries come, they come, they do their delivery, they go.
Right.
Now, if a problem is brought to the contractor's attention, and they know they just got a delivery, you know, like I say, most of the contractors are pretty stand-up. If there's a problem, they're going to take care of it.
So, then, home, we advise homeowners then, if there's a home being built near you, and, and you do experience something like this, you probably then know, go to that contractor.
Well, and again, if there is a problem and it's on somebody else's property, again, the contractor needs to stand up and basically, you know, do the right thing, plain and simple.
We'll work on some education with contractors. And obviously, if a contractor is damaging a property, whether it's your property or someone else's, you can contact us, contact code, and we'll address it with the contractor. Find out what the situation is.
It's a start.
It's, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I may have missed it in the beginning, John Smith, Building Department.
Smitty, better known as Smitty.
Yes, AKA Smitty.
There you go. Thank you, Smitty. Any question, more questions for Smitty? We'll move on then. Recommendations from city officer, city manager? Anything for us?
The only thing I'd like to say is, again, thank you for supporting me in this transition. And as we come out of the gate, moving forward, I look forward to helping you continue to make the city an even better place to live, work, and play. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Good to have you here. City attorney, you have a city attorney action register.
Yeah. And pursuant to your request, provided not only the action register, but also a litigation update. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Is there anything in particular that you wanted to point out?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone have a question?
No, I appreciate getting that information. And it's, it's very helpful because we get a lot of questions from residents about the ongoing things that are hap-
Understand.
Yes, we do.
I, I understand the wheels of justice sometimes grind very slowly. So, even a quarterly report may not give you anything that's new.
Well, and the litigation report, I know there's a lot of things that say nothing new to report. But can you provide on that report what the date of the statute of limitations is on those cases?
Okay. So, I think the report that you're referring to that, that has a lot of nothing new to report is actually a litigation report from our insurance attorneys.
Okay.
So, I'm not involved in any of that.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
But if you do have a specific question regarding one of those matters, we can get an answer for you.
It's just, you know, they go on and on and on and on and on.
Yes. I, I saw, you know, I see those. And I say, optically, it doesn't really look good, but I understand what they're saying. Particularly since we're generally on the defense side of any, of all those things. And so, for the most part, the plaintiffs, the ones that are bringing the case, they have control of the movement of the case.
Right.
And it's not necessarily in our best interest to try to push it along because, you know, many of those cases, at least some of those cases will go away as a matter of default. If there's no action on a case for a year, then, then the court will ultimately, unless there's a good reason for the delay, on its own, court dismiss it.
And it all seems to come full circle. I was researching that a little bit. And it seems that at some point in the past, that there was a report that said, for example, February to July, nothing new to report.
Right.
And it was requested that that be expanded by month. So, now it's coming back around to, it all says the same thing. Can we condense it a little more?
To 90 pages of nothing to report.
Well, you know, people, people that read that go, well, you know, so, nothing new to report, nothing new to report. When does this actually expire? Is there, isn't there statute of limitations kind of a thing? So-
Well, generally, as I said, the statute of limitations generally applies to the time you could bring the case. There is no statute of limitations between the time you bring the case and the time that it reaches an ultimate conclusion as long as you're prosecuting it to some extent at least once every year. So, so the statute of limitations, by, by the time you see it, is no longer relevant. And that's all I have.
Okay. Then city clerk, and here comes Sarah.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Sarah.
So, today, under vacancies, we have a three-year term on the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee, an unexpired term on the General Employees Pension Board, two unexpired terms for alternates on the Board of Zoning Appeals, an unexpired term for an alternate on the Building Board, a three-year term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee, and an unexpired term on the Utility Advisory Board. Then, under appointments, we have a three-year term on the Code Enforcement Board with two eligible applicants. Each of you should have a voting sheet. Oh, have they already been filled out?
There's four of them right there.
Okay, if you, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I haven't had to do this for a while.
I know, right?
I know. You're out of practice.
Exactly.
Well, you can count to five.
Remember how to add?
Fortunately, there's only two.
We know you can count to five.
Sometimes.
That's funny because we had, we had one one time where it, none of the numbers made sense.
No, that was probably me, yes.
Yeah, you were sitting right there and you were having trouble.
That was actually really funny.
As I frequently say, if I could count or do anything with math.
And your excuse was, I'm an attorney. I don't know how to add.
I would have been a physician if I could only do better in math. And the appointee is Carol Perry. Thank you.
Oh, good. Okay. Excellent. Congratulations, Carol. Yes.
Bye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You bet.
A friend of mine used to say, you really only have to count to three.
There you go. That's true. Under policy and legislation, you know, I I'll just say again, congratulations and welcome again. And I know Jaha and I have a tourist development council meeting on Friday, and all of us, the meetings are back in full swing. I'm got the appointment to the to the Utilities, Public Works, and Natural Resources Committee for the Florida League of Cities, but I will be attending their meetings on Zoom. And I have made that choice that I am not going to be physically going to their meetings and because I feel it's more productive for us, and they're they're offering that Zoom option, so I am going to do that. But other than that, I don't really have anything else other than, it's October. Giant.
Can I make a closing comment once you're finished up there, if I could, please?
Well, of course. Jaha? Nothing? Lynn?
Two quick things. Hot off the press, I spoke to Dan from the Assisted Living Project last night, and here's the report. The lender we have been using on our other projects has shut down new deals until COVID subsides. We have engaged a loan broker, and the timing plan is to close on a loan by early January and start construction at that time. And his building permit has already been approved by the city, and it's it's on hold until he can get started. And and then he also sent me a video, which I haven't yet figured out how to forward to you guys, but it's the project that they're doing in Brandon, Florida, and it's a progress video. So, as soon as I can figure out how to forward that, I will send a copy to you guys so you can see what they're doing. It's a similar-looking project. And the other thing is, I am ecstatic to report that the FDOT has approved the changes of our highway signage for the Military Heritage Museum and the Vietnam Wall, and they expect to have it done by the end of October. And the Carmelita Street intersection improvements are due for construction now in 2024. They pushed it back. They're still looking at a roundabout, but then they keep going back and forth whether it'll be signalized or it'll be a roundabout, but they're leaning toward a roundabout. That's it.
Congratulations, and thank you for for bird dogging that sign issue.
Oh, man.
That was a tough one.
Oh, boy.
Yes. Debbie?
I have nothing. Nothing. John?
Again, welcome, Greg. Forward, forward, and this was a very interesting meeting, a lot of good discussion, I thought.
It is.
It's tough, it's tough to do it when you're, this is the only time we have to talk.
It is. Yes, and as we've gone to the the training for the Florida League of Cities puts on, and they've said, use this time, even like a council member comments, use this time to really communicate with each other about things. And I know, and they said, it's it's tough because it's, what, 20 till 2:00, and we've been here since 9:00 o'clock, and and, you know, we are hungry or whatever, and yet they said.
That ship sailed. That ship sailed a long time ago.
So, use the time to communicate, so.
No.
Very good point, John.
Thought the record was like 1:30.
Yeah. So, Greg, you have a.
I just wanted one final comment. You know, as staff, we try to provide good information, and we deal with a lot of people in a lot of settings, and sometimes that may transfer into here, but our our goal was to provide good information and take direction, number two, lecture the council.